I don't know.
We're gonna go ahead and get started here. Sorry to break up briefly society, but. Okay, welcome to the July 15th work session. Appreciate everyone being here, both online and here at the meeting. We're just gonna go get right into it and turn the time over to Randy. Wherever you'd like, but we just need a mic, yep? We've got a mic right there, so whatever you feel more comfortable doing. You can just pull that out too and just bring it over.
Well, thank you for having us. So this is a request following our presentation at the UAC conference in St. George a couple of months ago. Just to talk a little bit more about the Housing Foundation, so I'll give you a little little background about the creation of the Housing Foundation, why it was created, and then we can dive into some details. So really quickly, what we saw happening was several of our more rural counties, for the first time ever, were organizing as redevelopment agencies. And the reasoning for that was there was a lot of particularly solar development that started happening in unincorporated areas. And so they had never, never really had any ask or reason to organize as an agency or deal with project areas. I think you guys differ a little bit where you've seen development. But as that started happening, we started providing services and support to those counties that were just unfamiliar with the process, the statutory requirements of organizing as an agency and then creating the project areas. So we got really involved and as you may know, there's a statutory requirement that on certain project areas, there's a 10% affordable housing set aside requirement. So off the top, 10% should be set aside for housing. And the earliest projects, those counties not really having a housing plan or really knowing what to do with those funds, they were just sending the money to the Oling Walker Housing Fund. And then as housing needs really started to evolve throughout the state in all areas and even in those rural counties, they started looking for more strategic ways of keeping that money in their own county and dealing with the funds locally. And so because we were already involved in helping with the creation of project areas and supporting them in that effort, then we kind of started to try and help them figure out what to do with this housing set aside and what they could do in their own counties with that. So that led to a conversation about creating a housing foundation where we could kind of establish our own rules specific to those counties that wanted to participate. So this program is not for all UAC members, it's specifically for those counties that choose to participate in the Housing Foundation. So while my background and my passion really is developing programs and services for counties, I do not have a lot of background in housing limitations on the federal side. And there's been a lot of creative stuff that the state has tried to do to address this issue. And so that's why I then brought on Dan Hammer. So I'm gonna give Dan just a minute to talk about his background, then we can dive into the details of the program.
Thanks, Randy, and thanks for letting us come. So my background is, you know, why I'm even here. So where I first met Randy, I was in the state legislature, I was in the state senate, was in, was the majority whip in the senate. And then when Governor Cox got elected first time, he asked me to leave and join his cabinet to run the governor's office of economic development. So I went and did that there. So both as a legislator and then back running Go Ed, now Go EO, spent a lot of time dealing with housing, not to, I guess, not to supplant what's happening with like Utah Housing Corporation, Oling Walker Fund, other activities, but more to make sure that people were aware, housing is kind of a bellwether around broader economic development activities. When housing gets too expensive, other economic development activity slows or stops because the workforce is no longer here. And so it's kind of a leading indicator, housing affordability, housing availability, is a leading indicator toward continued and future economic growth and economic prosperity. And one of the metrics we always looked at at Go Ed or Go EO was upward economic mobility. That was a big deal to us, right? The concept that you can start coming from a home that had a certain average household income and you, as the next generation, could, you know, exceed that. So you could move up that economic ladder as an individual. And Utah leads the nation in upward economic mobility. And we just thought that was a really important metric and try to preserve that. And as we were looking at what I would call headwinds in Utah's future economic development, there's a couple of things which you're well aware of and you've heard of that are headwinds for the state. One is water. Water availability is a huge issue. Another one that's more acute today and wasn't really something we talked about. So I left the governor's office three years ago. So something that wasn't as acute then, but is more acute today is power. So I'd put power up there, power availability, and you've heard some of this, right? The other one, though, was the cost of housing. And it's not the cost of housing for someone making $200,000 a year or a household with an income of $200,000 a year, it's the cost of housing for that first time home buyer, for that initial renter. And so we spent quite a bit of time at Go EO, developing policies and working with legislators to help facilitate policies to encourage more, what I'm gonna call entry level or workforce housing stock, either rental or for sale. Since I've left both Go EO and the legislature, I still spend quite a bit of my time like with Steve Waldrep, who is the governor's housing advisor, just talking through like what are policies we can put in place, you know, working with UAC, working with the league, to figure out what are some policies, some ideas better than others, some more creative than others, but things we can do to help facilitate the continued development of housing stock for that kind of entry level house. There's already federal programs for low income housing. So I'm not discounting that, but I'm not gonna talk about that every.
You say low income, you're not talking affordable.
When I say affordable, so affordable is a tough word. So affordable has a federal definition. And the definition of affordable federally is people that earn under 80% of the area median income or the average income for like county, like Morgan County, right? So there are already programs in place by the federal. They're administered by Utah Housing Corporation, but they're under the federal government for housing projects that are targeted toward people earning 80% or less of the average county income, right? So, and I'm gonna use those two words interchangeably because they typically are. So affordable housing programs target income threshold that is low income. And they kind of say low income is, it's actually is 80% of AMI and below. And on this little handout, if you flip it over, you can actually kind of see some of the definitions the federal government uses. But there's already programs to address that space.
So let me just ask you a question or give you a scenario that we've already had in our county, just so. Because this is the frustrating part to me is, is we had a developer come in, sell us on a PID, which we would never do again, sell us on affordable housing, we're doing these for affordable housing. What ended up happening was is we had, we ended up with $800,000 townhomes that three quarters were bought by investors and a PID that doubles the property taxes on the people. And we have no way to stop that, so how do you, how do you recommend that?
Great question. So, so first off, just to put this to bed. So when I use the words low income and affordable, I'm referring to that federal definition of 80% of AMI or below, right? And there's already programs for that. So to get to your question specifically, what we tried to do is capture the next level. So it's, it's that bracket of, let's call it 81% of area median income up to 100% of area median income, like just, and we're gonna call this, for the sake of this conversation, if you're okay with this, workforce housing or attainable housing, I'm just gonna call it workforce housing, if that's okay. But it's folks that are making between 80 and 100% of your area median income, which we can go look this up, it's all public data, right? HUD publishes this all the time. I don't know, I should have known before I walked in here, and I apologize, I don't, but we can go look that up. And what we're trying to do to answer your question specifically, the way we're targeting, well, let me say this. So just to close this loop before I get to your answer. So as Brandy and I were talking, there's these housing set asides you're actually required to do if you're doing project areas. Now, what you described is not, does not, like setting up a PID, right? To capture the tax and give it back to someone, that is a project area, but that one's a little bit different than the ones we're talking about. So we're talking about typically they're heavy industrial project areas that get set up. And in some cases, like Brandy said, what was driving this is actually like solar, these big energy projects that they were creating these increment zones to capture the tax to fund the project. And there's this housing set aside that's required in statute. And we tried to think through, okay, what can we do that's not being addressed? So like I said, federal programs already take care of the affordable housing, the low income housing. That's already addressed federally, whether someone uses it or not, it's already there. There's also already first time home buyer assistance through the Utah Housing Corporation. The legislature's put in, I think, 50 million bucks now, it's not been drawn down. I think there's still $30 million in this program for a first time home buyer to get a 100% loan. You know, so it's a bank loan with this other first time home buyer, not credit, but loan sitting on top of it, like that already exists. So we don't need to reduplicate that, right? Those are already out there. But what we did try to say is, there still seems to be, what you actually said, I guess I'll say this too. It does seem like developers are able to put projects forward that are not affordable. They're not attainable, they're what I'm gonna call market, right? An $800,000 townhome or condo, like, I can afford that. So that's, I don't know, that's market, or maybe that's even high end. And so those guys don't need help, is what we're saying. But what we have found is developers, because they can go build an $800,000 townhome, they won't build a $250,000 townhome or $300,000 townhome, maybe it's even a $400,000 townhome, because they make less money on it, period. And so what we tried to do is say, what could we do to create a mechanism? And just to say it like transparently, it's basically to buy down the cost, the lost profit that developer gets by deciding to do a $300,000 townhome or condo versus an $800,000 condo. They make, they probably make three or four times as much money on the one versus the other. And so what we tried to do is create a program that says, look, you have to, you have to have a percentage of your project that fits within either, if you're, if it's, if you're doing apartments, rental rate, you have to have a rental rate that fits within, and using the same guidelines that the federal government uses for affordable housing programs, we're just raising those income limits, right? Using the exact same guidelines, you either have to have rental rates that don't exceed a certain, I think it's, if I'm looking at this, it can't exceed 30% of your annual gross income. So the annual rental rate can't exceed 30% of your income. So you have to have some form of rent control on a certain percentage of your rental units, if you're doing apartments. If you're doing for sale product, and that's up to the land use authority to approve, right? What's getting billed is, we want them for sale, great. If you're gonna do that, you can't exceed four times, so this actually has a typo on these numbers on the purchase projects, if you look in the back. That should be a much bigger number, it should be four times the AMI. Regardless, though, we're basically saying you have to have a for sale product that does not exceed, in this case, and again, this is a draft, we actually, you know, subject to input. But you cannot, you have to have for sale product that does not exceed four times AMI. And where do we come up with these numbers? Well, on the rental, that's what the federal government's already doing, HUD's already doing this on the affordable housing projects. We just raised the income limit. On the for sale product, we just looked at what banks do. So if you go to get a bank loan underwritten, they typically, and you guys have all experienced this, they'll typically look at your ability to pay for that home based on your ability to pay the mortgage, right? And one of the rules of thumb they have is that you shouldn't buy a home just to be safe, more than, they actually go up to five times of your annual household income. We kind of dropped that a little bit to four as we were putting this together, to be a little more conservative and try to get a more affordable product even. But what we're saying is, if you're gonna come to us, to this foundation, apply for a grant, which we are proposing it as a grant, you have to deliver a percentage of your product that's gonna be now what I'm gonna again call workforce housing. That's something someone making between 80% and 100% of your average county income can afford, based on metrics that have been in place forever on the affordable housing side, just raising the income, or using rules of thumb or best practices that banks have been using forever to underwrite these, these options. And so if you're a developer and you come to us and you say, hey, I have a project in Morgan County, and I'm gonna make up some numbers here, if that's okay, just for the sake of an example. I have a project in Morgan County, the average area median income for a single person household, I don't know this, but I'm gonna guess you're not that far.
126 or 92.
126, bam, 126. And now I'm gonna make this easier for me to do the math, I'm gonna say it's 100,000, if that's okay.
No, go for it.
It's easier because I can do that math in my head, I can't do 126. But if the average income's 100,000 and you come to us, to this foundation and say, I want a grant, we're gonna come back to you, great, one, send us your proposal. It has to be, we're not gonna give you any money until you have your entitlements in place. We're not gonna give people money on projects that don't go, right? You gotta.
So what is the grant, how much is the grant amount? How do you determine that?
What we've said is it can be up to 40% of your project costs. It's a post-performance grant, you gotta spend the money and you gotta do an accounting for it, just like other state agencies do.
And it goes to the developer?
Goes to the developer to buy down, essentially, in essence, it's to buy down their profit margin.
So it's not coming out of our taxes in the county?
It's not, except for one sense, you're required to set aside up to 10% per state law into an affordable housing program. We're saying this complies, so you could send the money to the foundation. The foundation then administers those applications for you, they vet the project, you don't have to do that. You don't have to send us the money, right? This is an option. If you want to, though, we'll vet the program or we'll vet the application. They still have to come to you for all their land use, we're just a grant. But your set aside you're required to make anyway can come here and then that can go back to that developer. But what they're required to do in exchange for that grant is provide a product that is attainable, that is an entry level for sale or for rent housing product.
I mean, still in like Mountain Green, the average median income is one, just over 145. That's still 580,000.
I know, it's still real expensive, but it's better than a million, it's better than a million dollar house.
Well, if you actually look so on, from what HUD is saying, 80% AMI for one person for the Morgan County, it says it falls under the Ogden Clearfield HUD metro area, is $62,000. So one person or two people, 71, 250. So if a husband, wife, whatever, they're gonna come, you're saying four times, that's under 300. There's nothing in Morgan County for 300, you can't even buy a lot for $300,000.
So it's gonna have to be like a condo, right? And that's where it's gonna.
Well, even, I mean, our townhomes are 500, 600,000 dollars.
So it's gonna have to be a product that's different, but that's how this works, right? Is you're gonna offset that cost for the developer, so they're willing to consider delivering a $300,000 condo probably versus going and building an $800,000 townhome.
And consider that 40% profit.
So have you done it before?
This is, this is brand new, it's brand new, so.
So is the rent control in perpetuity?
In theory, it'd have to be a contracted rent control.
If it's not rent and we're doing it off a sales price, they're just gonna turn around and sell it for the market price?
We'd have to put some protection in place then.
Well, that's almost like a deed, you'd have to do a deed restriction for X amount of years, so that they can't.
How many years?
So what the federal government does is that, I think it's 30 years.
I wanna say a lot, most of them, when they talked about it, UAC was last fall, they were talking 10 to 15 years was kind of their, if I recall. But, I mean, then do we become the babysitter of that? You know.
I mean, you don't have to be, so part of this, part of the contract with this foundation would be some form of annual reporting, some sort of a recorded deed restriction, right? That runs with the property.
That'd have to be on the title, I would guess.
Yeah, you'd have to record something, there'd have to be a recorded restriction.
The other thing is, some of the requests that have come from other counties that are interested in this, and I'll use Emery County as an example, because they have, they have a bit of money that they're just sitting on right now. And so they have been asking us to help develop a housing plan. And some of the things that they've been looking at, and like Dan said, this, this is new. This came about as a way of coming up with a solution to a problem. And so it's evolved a little bit, but from member input. And so one of the examples from Emery County, where they have access to funds right now, they would like to use some of their funds to help with renovations because they have a lot of housing stock in their counties that just don't meet current standards. And so they would like to develop a kind of a grant program or a low interest loan program to help with renovations, to use up existing homes that they have. They've also asked us to help develop a plan that really emphasizes the need for housing for teachers, law enforcement officers. And so those are just a couple of examples, Juab County's asking for something very similar. So it really is, I mean, it's, it's a foundation, it's set up as a 501(c)(3), but it is at the request of UAC members and driven by input from members. So although we're helping create the framework around it, you have a lot of input as to what your own needs are in Morgan County.
And where is this grant money, original grant coming from?
It's coming from your house and set aside. So that's really where this came from.
From the 10%?
Yeah, because, so where it came, using.
Where did that come from, the 10%? I don't get that.
So when you create a project area, if you create a project area, and I'll use your PID.
So it's by project, though?
It's by project.
It's not like an annual assessment?
No, it's, well, it sits with that project area as long as that project's there. So let's say you create a project area for, I don't know, say a power, I don't, I'm just gonna make one up. I'm totally making this up, okay? Say Rocky Mountain wants to build.
That sounds made up.
Let's say they wanna build, let's say they wanna build a gas fire power plant in, in, in Morgan County, okay? And a nuclear, they wanna build a nuclear reactor in Morgan County. All, just for the record, is totally made up, none of this, okay? And, and let's say they come to you and say, hey, we need to create a project area. And you guys say, great, let's do it, we think that's so great. And let's say you capture 75% of the property tax from that project and that project area. And just because I can do this math in my head again, let's say that you're gonna collect a million bucks a year for that project area, okay? Just for the sake of this example, 10% of that million has to go to affordable housing. So $100,000 in that example has to go to affordable housing. Now, next year, as you know, you're not gonna collect a million dollars because the assets are gonna depreciate and you're gonna collect, I'm just saying, 950,000. So year two, you have to set aside $95,000 to go toward affordable housing. You're required to do that by state law. Now, you have a couple of options. You can sit on it and you can have people come ask you for it and you can dole that out here. That's an option, totally viable option that you can do. You also can send it to the Oling Walker Housing Fund, which isn't as far from you as it is like from Emery County, but I'll just tell you, this is not, no disrespect to the Oling Walker Housing Funds, wonderful organization, wonderful program, 98% of that money is gonna end up on the other side of those mountains from Weber Davis Salt Lake and Utah County, that's where it's gonna end up. So if you're in Emery County, that doesn't seem like a great option. It's compliant with the law, but you're not keeping that money in your community. And that's actually where this came from, because they're like, we don't, we don't necessarily want to do all this. And it's not even they don't know what to do, it's like, they just don't wanna deal with it. So they asked Randy, can you figure out some idea? And Randy talked to a group and we came up with this as an idea. We could create a nonprofit that's volunteer board members, right? That receives the money, we can vet project, we can, we can vet projects, we can dole out the money, we can put restrictions in play. We're open to input, like, we're open to whatever, right? We haven't done this yet. But this is where we are, at least based on the input we've received from other counties of thoughts that we think makes sense, we think it's executable, we believe it can result in seeing for sale, for rent, but even for sale product in your communities that someone with their first job maybe can go buy. And that's just interesting to us, and that's what we're trying to do.
So on these projects where we're supposed to set 10% aside, these are privately funded projects within the county. So example, Watts At Feigs Ranch, are we supposed to be setting 10% of that aside?
If you've created a project area around it?
So you have to create a project area around it.
It's basically, yeah, you have to, you have to create something that's gonna capture increment that's gonna go back into that project area.
It's like a CRA and RDA.
So like the developments going on in Mountain Green, could be.
We have one created, but we don't have an active project.
Right, I'm just saying, those could be projects, correct.
And like I said, we're not asking you to set aside money, we're saying you have to anyway. And so what we're saying is like, this can be a vehicle that can have a lot of flexibility around it. Obviously, you can do it all yourselves, you know, you're totally welcome to do that, but if you don't want to and you wanna partner with UAC on this, here's a vehicle where you can put the money, it's compliant with the law and it still gets the money back. The other thing we're doing here is we're saying only communities that are participating in the fund, only developments in those communities would be eligible to apply. So we are really trying to meet one of the requests that we got of keep the money in our community. If we're gonna, if we're gonna hold it back, we want it to go back in our community. And so we're, we're trying to put that in place in, in these documents.
How many counties are participating right now, or is it so new that?
And new, like we've.
So there's nothing in the fund?
Solar developments that were built over the, the last five, six, seven years have just triggered the last couple of years. So they're just now starting to receive increment. And so this was just set up in the fall and they'll now be collecting tax increment. And so we've actively been writing housing plans, we've met with, there's probably, I would say three or four of them that are probably further down the path of, of adopting a housing plan that will be kind of the guiding document that will help determine what they wanna prioritize as far as where to use their set aside funds.
So back to my original question, there has to be a, an initial pot of money, where does that come from?
It does just come from these set asides, so.
So in other words, our 10%, you're saying you could put it into your fund and then we can apply for that 500,000 or a million dollars, whatever we may need, if there's enough funds in there to be able to get that back for a developer.
And the way we're thinking about it is not that you apply, but it's actually the developer that applies. You still are the land use authority, right? You're still entitling it, you may even tell them, hey, go apply. Maybe we even put in place, they have to have a letter of support, you know, like, we're still working through those details. But the develop, the way we're thinking about this, it would be the developer that would apply, the developer that would receive the funds with the restrictions. But, the develop, the way we're thinking about this, it would be the developer that would apply, the developer that would receive the funds with the restrictions. And then the developer would move forward on the development.
Does that first come for sir, or how is it?
Yeah, it would be, it'd be based on availability of funds, right? If they're gone, they're gone. And now, we believe, and we hope, uh, that these project areas, the CRAs, typically run for forty years. And so, we would hope that we would demonstrate to you all that this is a great program, we're seeing it's working, it's doing what it's supposed to do, and you're just gonna put the money in it over those forty years, right? And, um, so that it does get replenished every year, just as you're collecting that tax every year.
Is this done as a county, then, not county, city, it's just county only?
So, cities could also do it, I mean, theory, right? But, as far as from UAC perspective, you know, work with the counties, more than the cities, so, uh, it's been kind of driven more by counties than cities, but in theory, a city could also participate. But more, I think, was this accurate, Brandy? I mean, again, on Wasatch Front, you see CRAs in cities, we don't see as many of those in rural Utah. Uh, they mostly are occurring in unincorporated counties, because that's usually where the land is to do a bigger project, because usually you're only doing these for really big industrial projects.
So, is any of this money gonna go to the Wasatch Front, or those four counties, or is it all just rural?
Well, again, in order to have a development, you need to be participating. I think, if anything, there's a possibility for just the opposite, one of the things that we've heard recently from some of the municipalities in Salt Lake County is they have a large amount of set-aside dollars sitting in an account, but they don't have either land area for more developments, or, or they've done, they feel like they've done their share. And so, they have expressed some interest in supporting our fund, but looking for development opportunities outside of their area, just because they don't have the space for it anymore. And so, potentially, there could be funds, um, that would come from other entities, but only those that are participating in, in the program would be eligible for development.
How's your structure set up with all this money? How's the money growing?
So, it just goes, we wouldn't, our intent would not be like go invest it and speculate on it in any way, shape, or form. It probably just goes into a interest-bearing account, sits there until it goes back out. Like, our goal is to get the money back out candidly, because, um, just like you, you said, there's no three hundred thousand dollar homes for sale in Morgan County. There's none for sale anywhere else either. And you've heard the governor talk about, we need thirty-five thousand starter homes, right? Uh, it's not gonna happen as long as the market can sell an eight hundred thousand dollar townhome. No one's gonna build a three hundred thousand dollar one without some, I hate to say it, but without some mechanism that encourages them to do so.
Good talk, kicking outside the box.
No one said yes yet.
So, what are some of the other questions that some of the other rural sides are?
I have one, I, I have one, so, so, um, but one has been, it's, it's aligned with what you just asked. It's been, how do we make sure our dollars don't go somewhere else? How do we make sure our money stays in our county? We can certainly work something out there, the one thing I wanna say, though, is, let's say you have two hundred thousand dollars. Just, again, I'm making crap up, it's not a real-world scenario in any way, shape, or form, it's totally made up. But let's say you have two hundred thousand dollars, that may not be enough for a project, right? Let's say, again, making stuff up, Juab County has two hundred thousand dollars. Let's say Emery County has two hundred thousand dollars, well, if they're all in there, that's six hundred thousand dollars. That might be enough for a project that's worth putting some money into. And what we may ask is, hey, we wanna take your two hundred, their two hundred, and their two hundred, and now I'm gonna tell you something that you don't wanna hear. We wanna propose, we have an application for a project in NEFI, and we wanna take that money and put it in NEFI, but here's what we would commit to you. I don't wanna compare this to the CIV, but not dissimilar from that, like, let's all be in this together.
What's the CIV?
Yeah, you're gonna have to use acronyms here.
Sorry, the, um, what is that? The Community Impact Board. That's like the, the mining money, or the, the resource extraction money that comes out of a lot of these rural counties more, uh, yeah, it's where they're, they're doing like the oil extraction and stuff, it goes into a fund, and then those participating group counties get together, and they decide how the money gets spent, and they kind of do like, okay, uh, this year, Canab gets some money. Next year, um, it's gonna go to Duchesne, next year, it's gonna go here, you know, like, they kind of work that way, where you had your turn, so now someone else's turn. So, we may ask for that type of flexibility, particularly if there's not as much money coming in, to pool those resources and work in a way that's like, let's do this project this year in this county, but hey, we know you participated, let's make sure that we get you a project, you know, next year in your county.
That's the only way I can see it working at the first.
Yeah. There's, that, I, there's not, as Brandy said, Wasatch Front, there's a lot of money going into these set-asides. Off Wasatch Front, we're starting to see more trigger, but you're still talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, you're not talking about hundreds of millions of dollars, and there might need to be some pooling, especially at the beginning, to get projects, get housing projects going.
I think the one other question that I can think of is just the level of involvement from the participating counties. Some have said, we're comfortable with it, we're sending it to Oling Walker anyways, so we like this idea of something that's more focused on our own counties. Others have expressed an interest in making sure that they know the applications are coming in and what's happening in their county, so I think just the level of involvement's been another question.
So, does that mean that we have to set up an RDA or CRA? Or, or how does that work? I mean, right now, we have none.
We do.
I mean, we've got RDAs.
So, it's, it's, we have a CRA up in Mountain Green.
Yeah.
But, you can, it's just a layer, just like on our GIS maps, but they don't do anything until you have a-
A project.
And so, what he was saying about the project with the solar is that the project might be forty years, but the trigger year, so it, obviously, you have to go out for RFP, and you've gotta get design and build and construction, and that doesn't happen overnight, it might take two, three years after you get the project, um, approved under the Development Agency or Redistricting Agency, and so, the trigger year is when it actually starts to collect an increment of the tax to back pay for that infrastructure, and ten percent of whatever the allocation is has to go to affordable housing. And that, that's pretty common for most counties to do that, regardless, most of them in Kaish and Box Elder, they have that ten percent in there. It's just now it's a requirement.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, or does that answer the question?
So, there's a cou, a couple of ways, so, it sounds like you're ahead of the game if you already have a project area. That's really the way they're supposed to work, is you set them up as an economic development driver to attract industry or business into your area. What we've seen, um, mostly happening in other counties, it's kind of the other way around. The developer already knows that's where they're gonna put, uh, solar development, for example, and then they go to the county and ask for a project area to be created, because they've, they've already got land under lease, and they wanna capture the tax increment for infrastructure costs. So, that's, that is one way, I mean, there could be a development come in, if you've already got a project area, you could look at attracting some type of industry. That's where the, the triggering then would, um, start to generate some of the, the ten percent housing set-aside. Beyond that, I mean, that, that was the reason for setting up the Housing Foundation, that's not to say that there couldn't be funding from other sources. So, if there's a county that just had some money from somewhere else, and they wanted to put it into the fund, it could come from another source, and also, we've been talking to Department of Workforce Services, there's some funds that no one's taking advantage of right now for rural land acquisition, and so, they're really interested in what we're setting up here, so we're gonna do our part as well to see if there is access to other funds that if we had some momentum from the counties really interested in doing some creative projects off the Wasatch Front, that we might also be able to obtain some additional funding to help, um, help move things along.
Can I give another quick example to your question? Has the Utah Land Port Authority come and talked to you guys about port project areas?
They did, but then they closed it a year or so ago and says, they're not gonna come and talk to us, because they don't have any-
Okay, well, but that is an example, if you were to create or designate a port project area, that becomes effectively a CRA, it's, it's a port, but it effectively works like a CRA, they're gonna collect the increment, and they have the same housing set-aside in, within that project area.
I'm just trying to see how that's gonna work.
I didn't see how it could work.
You mean this or the port? Yeah, the Port Authority, there was one potential project up in, potentially, we were looking at up in the Port area a few years ago, about three years ago. And, uh, it just wasn't, it was just, and that was one area we thought about.
Really, the port project area, it's just, it's a simpler way to create a CRA, I mean, that's what it is fundamentally. It's an easier way to create a CRA.
But now, they closed off all the abilities to do an import.
I bet you could still get one, they're still creating them, they-
Built this last year, like, we couldn't.
I have one, that, I think, something's, there's, there's something going on there that either I don't understand, or, or something, because they are, they, they're creating them, they created one just barely in Spanish Fork, Utah, created one up in Box Elder County in Garland, so they're still creating them, so something's happening there, it's working or not working.
We were working on one here in Morgan area, processing and that kind of stuff.
Not that we're here advocating on behalf of the Utah Land Port Authority, but it's worth you reaching out to them and seeing what's going on, because I bet, I bet there's something else there. They have to be invited in, you know, and maybe, maybe there's some local opposition.
Jared and I had gone and asked for it, and nothing ever happened.
I'm gonna talk to him, not trying to get in your business, but-
Yeah, I talked to him, I talked to him, Jared talked to him. Jared's not here now, so, anyway, we just dropped it after that.
Okay. Anyway, that's just an example of a way to-
Well, if you think they're still doing it, we can look into it, so.
Not trying to push them.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to determine if we've got an area here in Morgan, whether it be Mountain Green, or wherever, whether or not it would work. I mean, we've got the RDA already established down in the Mountain Green area, and I know there were some developers that wanted to, but I still did not see where it was beneficial to us.
And that may be where, like, if you already have one, maybe you just, there's not the interest, because usually how they work is, it's, it's usually the city or the county, but there's often usually a developer already, even with port project areas now. There's usually already a developer, there's already a business, that's like, hey, we wanna come in here, it's gonna be a lot of infrastructure, because it's green-filled, you know, there's no roads, there's no utilities, and the county or the city invites the port in to create that CRA, because it's just an easier way to create one, and they capture seventy-five percent, and goes right back into the infrastructure of the project area, so they'll build the roads, they'll bring in the utility stones. I'm gonna tell them they should call you.
I'm doing good anymore. I'm not over that, you'd have to have her call them.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And then it'll take a year to get her up, sweetheart. I'm not saying you're slow, it's just a matter of learning.
Careful what you say.
It's just a learning process.
Like I said, it's just an option, um, we, we, we think it fills a gap in what's being built and what's not being built because of market, and really, all the rest of it.
Can I just ask one more clarifying question that I, I don't think I'm grasping? So, if we had a CRA that had an active triggered project, the monies from that triggered project go into the foundation, understandably, but does it go into a giant pot, or is it still restricted for Morgan?
Well, like, the example Dan gave, potentially, if there was a project ready, like, let's just say the first year you trigger, you have twenty thousand dollars. And so, there's not enough to work with, but there's funds. So, if another county were to have a project ready to go, then potentially, those funds could be used, but the goal is always the counties that are participating at some point would be prioritized for development. But it might take a couple of years to get enough funds, so you could say, until we have enough funds to move forward with a project that we have in mind, we're okay with our funds being used.
So, then, in that, if we were, if this, the county commission chose to be a participant, they would sit on that foundation board as a voting member?
There would be input, that has not been set up yet. The governance of it, like I said, we have some counties that are, just see it as an alternative to Oling Walker, but focused more on development in their county, and so they're interested, others wanna make sure that they have input and sign off on projects, and so, through, um, land use authority, that, that would happen anyways, but there, there could be input.
Okay.
So, I think it depends on the individual county's needs, some just don't have the resources and are not really interested, but we're sensitive to those that do, and so, we'll accommodate that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Anything else?
No, that was great, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
We would love to see something happen that would help our kids be able to stay at home if they wanted to.
I hear ya, I, I have, that's kind of been something that was motivating to me, not just trying to help these counties out, but I have two sons right now, one's twenty-three and one's nineteen, and it's pretty gloomy to think about their ability to buy a home. And, uh, you know, a lot, a lot, a lot of folks in the same- Yeah, yeah, so, my, my twenty-three-year-old son that just got married two weeks ago has been living in our basement, we added a kitchen, and you know, he would love nothing more to be out on his own, but it's, it's pretty rough.
They put heaters in wallcans, you know?
This is a, this is a dumb, personal story. Uh, when I got married, uh, my parents went on an LDS mission, so my wife and I, we had three kids, moved into their house, lived there for three years, rent-free, but it let us save up enough money that when they came back, we could go out and buy a house. If we hadn't done that, I mean, I wanna think I would've bought a house eventually, but because I was able to, like, it took that, right? Rent-free for three years, save enough to go buy a house, and this was, jeez, uh, two thousand nine, you know?
And that's, if you have a kid that'll budget.
If they're living rent-free, they don't have a choice, you're on the bank account now. But, you, you know, I mean, and one of the things is like, I mean, you talk to the developers, and they're like, their mentality is they drive up on the mountain, look at that view, raise their lot price two hundred thousand dollars a lot, that's their mentality. And so, you, you ask them, and you, you know, hey, this is what we're needing, and they just see money. And, and how do you, you know, you think about what we would set aside, when you're talking a quarter acre lot just went up two hundred thousand dollars. I mean, we can't generate that kind of revenue to offset, and I, I mean, maybe greed isn't the right word, or I shouldn't, isn't appropriate for me to say it, but that's pretty much what it is.
That's the buyers and sellers in the market that set the value.
And so-
That's where this, this would require some density, right? Like, it's gonna be a condo.
Well, we're, we're getting density anyways, we're just not getting what we need.
Yeah.
We're getting density without the price.
Yep.
And, and, and basically, if you're not willing to deliver some attainable units, don't call us, right? We're not, we're not a program for you, and they can just work with you guys and get their entitlements and build what they're gonna build. But if there's any interest in their part, and even in your part, saying we wanna see some, uh, lower-cost product, and they say, well, it doesn't make sense, it doesn't pencil, I know you guys hear this every time someone sits down for you, it doesn't pencil. You can say, actually, there's a way to make it pencil, call the foundation, apply for a grant, you know, and it can pencil. And that's where we can get involved and work through with them, and figure something out that's a grant that gets some attainable units as part of the party.
So, if we have a person, or an individual, or an entity that wants to do that now, there's no money in the fund.
There ain't money, yeah.
Correct.
So, what do we do?
Uh, there's-
Okay, we stop all development until we get money.
Ten years ago.
You don't know what you don't know.
And, and like I said, the, the, the reason this came up is because there's a statutory set-aside, right? That's an ob, you're required to do it, and some of the rural counties, and I even wanna say it started with Emery, was like, we don't wanna send it to the Oling Walker Housing Fund, so we said, let's figure out an alternative to that.
Dan, I didn't catch your last name.
Hemmert, H-E-M-M-E-R-T.
H-A-M-M-E-R-T.
E. Hotel Echo.
Hotel Alpha, Mike, Mike, Echo, Romeo, Tango.
Hotel Echo, Mike, Mike, Echo, Romeo, Tango.
Thank you.
With a T at the end?
T at the end.
Yeah. And you were senior president?
No, I was the whip.
Oh, you were the whip, okay.
Then I ran Go Ed.
Thank you so, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
I'm gonna turn this off and then put it back, thanks. We're all cousins, there's not that many of us. I, I don't, but I guarantee you we're like six of us.
So we're all from, uh,
So where do y'all come from?
Uh, right after six.
Thirteen after six. So a little bit of kindergarten.
Yeah.
Counting.
Was it Dan? Aye. Dan?
I know, I thought it was like, I'm sixty.
Seems like a nice guy.
What do you, what do you guys think of this?
I like it.
It's a way to think outside the box.
If, I was hoping that they had, you know, a familiar box to-
To start off?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe they will.
Welcome everyone to our Morgan County Commission meeting, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Appreciate your attendance and we appreciate those that are with us on, online as well. We're going to start out. Well, first of all, just to let you know, we just met with the CEO in our work session. Just talking about more affordable housing in our county, which has been really escaping us and continues to, the way things have gone. So we're trying to, trying to see how we can help our children stay at home if they want to. Um, we're going to open our meeting with an invocation by Commissioner Nickerson. And he'll also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, we go for this opportunity. We have to meet as the county body and pray that thy spirit is well with us and that we can work through the issues that we have here in our county and listen to those who are presenting. And we can be civil and work together for the betterment of our, this beautiful county in which we reside. We're so grateful for all of our many blessings. We ask you to bless those who protect us and are first responders and all that they do and put themselves out there to, to take care of us. We are so grateful for this beautiful county. We pray at this time for moisture that we are in such, such need of. We're grateful for all that we have and we say, things be just Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Nickerson. Okay, um, we have three consent agenda items. Um, haven't received any word from anyone with any problems with those, so I'll look for a motion on that.
I hope that we approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
One more. There were some corrections on it and I've already given those to her. So they're just a hair bit different than what you brought in your minutes.
Okay. Do you want to share those with us?
It was missing a commissioner's name.
Okay.
So-
And that's, that's taken care of then.
Yep, it's printed in your signature packet.
All right. So I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Any Commissioner declarations conflict of interest? I have one on the item with, um, Buster's project. So I will just throw that out there so it's known. We're going to turn the time over to the public right now. Or if you can keep your comments to three minutes, but we'll give you a time to share anything. We only have one. We have three? Oh, three public hearings. So if you'll keep your comments to the things that are not, you'll have an opportunity to do that during a public hearing if you, uh, have something on those. So, um, we'll turn the time over to the public now. Okay. Seeing no one, we will move on to our presentations. Brother Rick or Nickerson? Bickers? Thanks for coming, Dave.
Thanks for allowing me to come. This is more of an informational presentation, but also, uh, I want to ask you to just consider doing something. As you're probably aware, it's not hard to figure out that we're getting slammed in Utah with fires this year. We are tapped on resources. We got people out everywhere. I, I'd even turned down opportunity to go out because, uh, my number one priority course is taking care of you guys. So I told them I'll stay. And, uh, but just to put this year in perspective is last year, we, uh, probably totaled acres burned through the whole fire season. It was just barely over ten acres. Our largest fire last year was two acres total for the largest fire. This year, we're already past forty acres burned. Of course, our largest one was thirty-one acres at the beginning of the season. And, uh, so if we look at it, if we want to play the numbers game to make it sound really like we're getting hit, that's a four hundred percent increase over what we had last year. Uh, luckily, uh, we've been able to contain everything, catch them quick. But with this year, the way that it's going, uh, we've been having discussions. And one of the things in our discussions that we've had statewide is, uh, the number of shooting fires that we've been having. Just on the Wasatch front, which Morgan County is part of in the way that the state's broken up, we've already had twenty-three shooting fighter, fires. Granted, the majority are in Tooele, which could be expected, as well as Utah County and Wyandavus County. But it prompted me to, uh, get thinking about our gun range. Back in twenty twenty-one, uh, we had a similar bad year and we, I went and did an assessment on that. And in twenty twenty-one, we actually did a moratorium on long-range rifle shooting at the gun range. I went out there again recently and did an assessment and it's actually, could almost be worse than it was in twenty twenty-one. If we go back to the first picture on our slide, go back to the beginning. Okay, the one with my truck. Yeah, right here. Okay, uh, when I went out there, uh, this is looking at where they do the rifle shooting at and make sure I'm recorded here. They're aiming for these berms. And, uh, this is a far one here. Okay, go to the next slide. Okay, this is a first berm. And what I'd like to point out is, for one, it's not a level shooting target range that they're doing. But this is a first berm and you can see what kind of condition it is, the number of rocks and things, the vegetation and stuff. And even jacketed bullets have been demonstrated that can start a fire. So, and we don't, and of course, we don't even allow steel tipped bullets anymore if we can help it. But we don't have a range master, so we're not monitoring that. But if you look at the condition of the first berm, you can see all the rocks and things, and then you can see the vegetation on it. So this is what we're expecting to stop the bolts. Next slide. Okay, this is the far range where they're using the most, where they, somebody would use a higher powered rifle to shoot at. You look at the homemade frame that's there, and if you look at the top of it, you'll notice it's the height of the berm. And so who knows where they're putting targets and who knows what they're actually putting targets on. But the thing I look at is I did go walk and went walking out here. Uh, Boyd Denzel walking out there too. And we can find evidence where it looks like bolts have struck rocks and stuff. And it's not hard to imagine people overshooting the backstop. It could happen. And then again, you can see all the vegetation that's in front of our supposed backstop. Okay, next slide. Okay, so here, here it is. You can see somebody put a metal target out there. But you can look at all the vegetation that's around it and look at the area behind it. And if we were to get a fire start, I'm going to have a hard time catching it before it could get spreading. And also we're starting to see development, especially on the west side of the gun range. Okay, next slide. Here's what's between the gun range and the houses. Get a fire started, get going through this grasses and in no time at all, we could have it in these people's backyards. Okay, next slide. And this is the fire break. You can kind of see what kind of condition it is. But I did ask the public works people to take a look at that and they did have go out and they have run the bulldozer up there. So we kind of mitigated that. But still, it could be questionable about how, if it's really one blade wide, wide enough to really stop a fire to go through there. But the biggest issue is shooting over the thing out in here. If a fire gets started out there, it'll be past the fire break. So the reason I wanted to come before you is, uh, I'd like to make the suggestion that you consider doing what we did in twenty twenty-one and put a moratorium on long-range rifle shooting. The pistol range is, I don't have a problem with. The shotguns, I don't have a problem with. It's just with the long-range shooting. If we, go back to the first slide, Kate. My suggestion would be is if you really want to continue having long-range rifle shooting at the gun range, we really should do it properly and what should be done is level it all out, so there's no vegetation between the backstop. Do burms, which is what is standard on rifle range setup and then the berm, a bigger berm in the back, so basically they're shooting in a confined area. It helps with sound issues. It also keeps everything contained within the actual corridor that the bullets would go on through. But we can get in a long discussion on really designing, redesigning the rifle range and stuff. But the real reason I came in front of you is with the fire conditions we're having, what we're seeing, I would strongly recommend that you consider us closing down rifle range, the rifle portion, long-range shooting. We're in fire restrictions now. We're seeing fire behaviors that are equivalent to what we normally see later in the fire season. Talking about August-type conditions, we're seeing those kind of fire behaviors already in the state. And with the fire restrictions in place, with what we're seeing wise, resource-wise or tight on the state level that being your advocate for wildfire safety in your county, I'd recommend that you could strongly, strongly consider us putting a moratorium on long-range rifles. The pistols fine, shotguns are fine, but actually the high-powered rifle shooting, the range is not in condition for that type of activity.
How long would you recommend that moratorium be?
I would say at least definitely while the fire restrictions are in place, probably through the end of the summer and reevaluate. That's what we did in 2021. We closed it for the summer and I would recommend we do the same thing and in the future, I would recommend that you look at, you know, considering doing a revamp of the rifle range. Like I said, my recommendation, and I've been to many shooting fires and I've also been on many range, I'm an active shooter myself. I'm, I even do cowboy action shooting, I'll admit it. But I'd strongly suggest we look at doing a major overhaul on the rifle portion of it and look at actually building burms and a true backstop if this is where you want to keep the rifle range, but I would recommend.
Would you say October 1st?
What's that?
October 1st, like up to October 1st?
Well, the end of fire season technically is October 31st by statute. But we can see how those, the biggest thing on the fire season that we're not sure what's going to happen is what the monsoons are going to do to us. If we get a lot of rain with the monsoons, the lightning usually doesn't kill us, but we've already had a few lightning fires in your county already. I'm not sure you're aware that we've had lightning fires. I spent last weekend up on Logan's property, putting out a, a lightning fire up on his property. So we're getting the fires and they're starting fairly easily and they're burning pretty well. But my recommendation be is go through August, reevaluate it the first part of September, see what, see if those monsoons came in and like I say, reevaluate on a 30-day type. You know, at least go through August because August typically is our bad month for the county.
I have a question on it though. If people are sighting in their guns for, or their rifles for deer hunt or elk hunt, by closing it down and they just go out into the wilds wherever they can and shoot, then we're defeating the purpose of having a gun range, so is there any, I mean, I agree with monitoring it all the time because potentially we could end up with more problem.
Yeah, what, if you don't want to do a moratorium on it, my suggestion would be is, I'm not a budget guy. Well, I know budgets. I've worked budget through my career, but I would strongly suggest that we do some major improvement to it. I'd get out and I would take, and I would actually start working and, and get in a dozer and stuff and working and actually clearing out this area up to the backstops. Build a couple of burms and as we level it out, so it's actually leveling, not doing an angle, build up some berm.
Did you say I would, Dave? Do you want us to get you a dozer? Did you say I would?
You sure you don't want me in a dozer? Actually, I played with the dozer, but when it's on a fire, I got free rein and we're not as picky as hell when we do our dozer line. But in lieu of being able to do improved work, improve the fire break, improve the burms, clean out the burms so they're not full of vegetation and actually look at some material and kind of eliminate as much of the rocky surface as we can. But this part here is not too bad, but when you went to the pictures of the burms, you can see how much vegetation's hanging around the berm and that's where the bullets are hitting. So there's some work to be done, so the question I would have would be, in lieu of shutting down the burning, the Bernie, got burning on my mind, shooting that somehow we figure a way to do a little bit more work and I don't know, like I say, I don't know what kind of resources you have to do that, to put in. Most of the impact's obviously going to be on public works. I mean, I did, they did go and run the dozer up there on the fire break for me recently. When I went to them, I said, "Guys, I need help. We got a prob, Houston, we have a problem." So anyway, that's what I wanted to come in front of you for, just tell you I have a concern. My recommendations would be is that we close it for a bit, at least until we get through the worst part of the fire season and consider doing some improvements to it. Like you say, if you want to keep a functioning gun range, I'd like to see us do it right and do a good one and do some improvements to it, but of course, that would take time, some budget, et cetera, et cetera. And I know that's out of my realm. I'm supposed to be the one that puts out the fires when they start, but personally, I'm to this age now where I don't feel guilty if I'm not earning my money fighting fires. I'd rather earn it, help, helping do preventive stuff and, and going along those lines.
And if we put a temp ban in and through August, rifle season doesn't open until the first week of October anyway. Muzzle loader, I think it's the last week of September, but.
I'm just thinking, you know, those that go elk hunting would be about the 15th of September.
If they are, they're poaching.
Elk season opens October 4th. Yeah, but the, there's CW, CWMA's or whatever they call them.
Oh.
CMUs.
Okay.
You have, you have a few that start on here, but in general, those are October.
So I, I'm good with it.
We'll, we'll discuss it then. I appreciate you, no, I appreciate bringing it to our attention because it, those are the kind of things that we don't always think about, so.
And like I say, I know, work with public works and if, you know.
They have an unlimited budget.
Did you hear that Brett?
Well, that's, that's what he thinks.
Anyway, thank you for your time. I just wanted to bring, bring up some concerns that we have because this year is one of those years. Thanks.
Thank you.
Correct, no. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate it.
Or it doesn't say, it's just a presentation.
He asked for a presentation.
Yeah, put it on our agenda to do.
Can, can you do an executive?
Going around to getting some old films.
An executive order?
Yeah, because we did it for the flood declarations. Can we declare it now also?
So I, I would say no, because I did pull up the Open Meetings Act thinking that it might come up as a question that says because of unforeseen circumstances, it's necessary. And it's, so we can discuss it, but as far as making a decision, if it's not been noticed, it has to be something that is an emergency in nature and unforeseen circumstances and because it was posted on the agenda, I, I don't know that it would be considered unforeseen.
Because I mean, I'm, I'm, we're looking at three more weeks before we meet. By then, the season, I mean, the fire season is now. It's not in three weeks from now.
We might be able to get Brett to put some sand up there or something, build that up a little bit right there. You think, think that would be possible, Brett?
That's what I was going to say, it just needs more budget.
See now, and I know there's people that are, that some of the construction, they're paying to haul a bunch of their material out to people and if we take it, if they could haul it and dump it there and we can just firm it up. The material may be little to no cost and then just with our equipment, move it around. Well, for the time being, it's, it's not leaving in the next couple of months. Unless we burn it all down.
Not until we find a new, new home for it.
You know.
Carrie? So just to preempt, at not the last cog meeting, but the one previous, it was brought up that there might be a stoplight coming inside Morgan County and it sounds like inside Morgan City and the commission just wanted more information on what that was.
Um, so, um, I believe at a previous meeting with the county or the city to look at some other study-related items. It was mentioned that there was some concern about traffic backing up down the ramp, the off-ramp from I-84, particularly in the morning to go to school.
And you're talking about the Morgan City ramp?
The Morgan City ramp, yeah. And so we were asked to look at that intersection to see if there was anything that we could do to address that issue. So we did a study to do traffic counts in that area and we looked at a four-way stop and a traffic signal. And so the traffic out there during the busiest hours on that off-ramp, there's, there's about 400 cars that get off there in the morning. And in the evening, there's about 500 that are getting off there in, for the eastbound direction. And so when we did this study, it didn't meet the volume criteria for a four-way stop, but not the delay. And so when we went and looked out there at the ramps, because there was some question as to whether it had the appropriate sightlines as you get off the ramp with the bridges there. That evaluation showed that it did, but with the amount there, it was close to meeting the warrant for a signal. So for, there's several traffic warrants that could meet, there's eight of those. One of them is a four-hour warrant, so it meets the minimum volume levels for installing a traffic signal for four hours out of the day. And so it already has two hours that meet and so there were two more hours that were very close and so if traffic grows by just 5%, then it would meet the criteria for that four-hour warrant. So as we were looking at options of what we could do at that intersection, a four-way stop did not seem like the right thing to do because even though it meets the, the traffic volume requirements and doesn't meet the delay requirements and then everyone has to stop the, in all the directions that go through there. And then looking at the ramp, because the, in the morning, there's 265 cars that turn right. And then in the evening, there's 390 cars that turn right. So we discussed the option of widening the ramp, but because of how close the railroad, the rail line is there, the cost to widen the ramp probably includes some walls and in addition to the roadwork and then coordinating with the railroad to be able to do that. So what seemed like the most cost-effective way to deal with the traffic on the ramp and the backing down the ramp was to install a signal. And the traffic signal would operate differently than maybe some of the ones that you see like in, if you drive down into Ogden. It would have sensors that would basically respond to the traffic, so if there's traffic that continues to come, it will stay green for that direction and then when that traffic clears, then it will go to the next direction. So I think there was some question as to whether you could pull, you would pull up at the stoplight and then you'd be waiting and there's no cars there and you'd have to stop anyway. So as long as there's no other cars on any different direction, when you pull up, it should change for you almost immediately. So it seemed like that would minimize the delay to people because not everyone would have to stop. It would deal with the backing that occurs on the ramp in the morning and in the evening and would be cheaper than widening the ramp and doing the roadwork and the, and the walls that would probably be required to do that. So there was a group of engineers, some from Salt Lake and then some from our region office that met out there and discussed those options. So that's kind of how we came to that decision and, and why we moved forward with doing some design for that signal.
So what's the process moving forward and timeline?
So we have what's called a procurement process, so it kind of streamlines everything because we have a built-in contract already, so there is a designer on board already to work on the design and we met out. We kind of had a kickoff meeting to discuss the design of that and where the traffic signal heads would be placed and because of the railroad bridge, putting something that would be more visible to people and then putting some advanced signings so that people would know that they're coming up to a signal because of the railroad structures. So because we just had that kickoff meeting, there's still a review process for that design and that's probably a couple of months out. And then, then it will go on the list for a contractor to come and build it and then it just depends on what their schedule availability is. So I would think sometime before the end of the year is when that can be installed. Are there questions?
So that, that location then is on one side of the, you had the I-84 coming down.
Yeah.
And it would be at the eastbound ramp is where you would put that or is it going to be on the westbound also?
No, just the eastbound ramp.
Just the eastbound and it would control that that goes just basically turning into Morgan City.
So, yeah.
Both directions.
So yes, so there, the three legs of that intersection would, would all be signalized, so the off-ramp and then the east, if you want to call it north-south there, directions that are on the state road.
So it'd be at the exit on the other side then too, other side of the freeway?
No, so there's only one signal. So if you turn off the ramp and then you start to come into town, yes, then that, you may have to stop at that signal, but there's only one traffic light.
So it doesn't help Commercial Street out at all?
Um, so no, it
Yeah.
No, it, it wouldn't control any other, you know, intersection.
To pass Commercial Street.
Well, I think it's unlikely that that would happen because it's just going to respond to the traffic that's out there. And so when the ramp traffic, you know, clears each cycle or it will stop because it will have a maximum amount of time that's programmed for the ramp and then the other directions will go. And so I think it's unlikely that you would see like significant traffic backing in other directions.
So the light, so for people turning off the ramp heading into town, it will stop people from coming from Old Highway or from the westbound ramp from coming, does that make sense?
Yes, it will.
And then, but the people heading out of town to get onto the freeway, it won't stop them at all. They'll just keep following to get on the freeway. Or it will stop them and then back them up past Commercial.
Because the width of that ramp is so narrow. Because the width of that ramp is so narrow, um,
Alright, 'cause I guess you have people turning left.
Yeah, 'cause you'd have people turn, because they all kind of line up in one line.
I just see it where Commercial Street is right there past the train.
Mm-hmm.
If you get those people heading to get, to go out of town, they back up past there, and you have one car that wants to turn left on the Commercial Street, it's all stopped.
So
That's the only concern that I see, is you get one person wanting to turn to Larry's, and that's all backed up? Nobody's going anywhere, you're all gonna sit there and wait for the light to turn. Does that make sense?
Um
'Cause that happens right now. If you've got any, if you've got people just coming down the hill from 7-Eleven, heading to the freeway.
Uh-huh.
You got one car that turned to come into town, they go to turn, to go up to Commercial Street, you stop, nobody else is getting off the freeway.
I never get held up exiting the freeway, but I get held up there.
I say, I, yeah, I, I don't even get off there, so.
So who, so who pushed this forward that we're just finding out about it?
City.
And that, they have jurisdiction over that little area or something, or?
Well, no, we do, so, um, but they made the request that we study the intersection. So we didn't go in with any, like, plan of what we were gonna do, we just went and evaluated what the sightlines were and did traffic counts. And so they just requested that we study it, and, um, so these were the results of the study.
So why don't we wait till it does pass that before we do that?
Because it's so close to meeting that requirement, the 5% is very minimal, that you could maybe count it on a different day, and it would be closer. And by the time we go through the process of, um, studying it, design, by the time we go through the design process and it's actually constructed, it probably doesn't make that much of a difference in, um, uh, meeting the, the traffic volume requirements. So that's kind of why, so that's why we moved forward with that.
So you guys don't look for public input or anything like that, or is, like, the decision?
So, I mean, certainly, um, the city or the county can offer their perspective. Um, but we put traffic signals in, in other jurisdictions all the time. And, um, the, the point of putting it in is to try to manage the traffic in the area. And one of the challenges is that, so we now have a record that we studied this, and it was close to meeting that, the signal requirement. And then we looked at crashes in the area, and they've all been property damage only. But for example, if we've done a study that says, you know, we can put a traffic signal in there, and there's an angle crash that happens in the future, then if someone comes back and says, well, you studied this and you could have put a signal in that prevented this crash, why didn't you do it? And so there is, there's balance there, and so, yes, we consider what the local issues are, but we're also trying to manage traffic at an interstate ramp in the state route as well.
Okay. And if it becomes more of a problem than we have now, how do we deal with that?
Um, I really think that if you look for an example of maybe something that is somewhat similar up in Garden City, near Bear Lake, there's, their main row, um, is a T-intersection. And, um, and the detection, really, the sensors that are at the signal, I think, are pretty responsive. And you'll probably be surprised that it will change fairly quickly, and, um, and I wouldn't expect to see a lot of backing. But we can always look at adjusting, um, the timing on it to try and, you know, make it as efficient as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll head into our action items now. We have F1. Michelle Jensen. I'm Kevin Eastman, if you wanna come forward. That's you, Michelle.
Thank you for this
You wanted him to go alone, didn't you?
Thank you for this opportunity to, to bring this to you today and, uh, to present how the local authority system kind of works, uh, in our state. My name's Kevin Eastman, I'm the executive director at Weber. And for the last 32 years, about the time I started, the name Weber Human Services was adopted. It was formerly called Weber County Mental Health and Substance Services, and Weber County Aging Services. And now we just limited that to Weber Human Services, and we wanted to make sure, because that name has been so established for so long, we, I, I wanted to throw in there that we serve Morgan and Weber Counties, and so when you see our logo, hopefully, most of the time you see that there is this inter-local agreement between the two counties, and it's actually much longer existing than just that, those 32 years. Uh, it's probably closer to 50 years that we've had this inter-local agreement between the two counties. And, uh, anyway, tonight though, well, with Michelle, she, she's our chief financial officer. I brought Nobu Azuka, who is the community services over the aging services director. And unfortunately, tonight Jed Burton, who is our clinical services, the behavioral health services, was not able to attend with this. But we hope to broaden your understanding a little bit about the types of services that we do offer, and, um, the actual, there are some limitations to the people that can be served with this. Michelle will talk about those, uh, in the presentation. But we'll be able to show you how the money is leveraged with federal money, and the, hopefully, the maximum result of, a lot of services go out to a lot of different people in both counties, so. I'll turn the time over to her.
I pasted in here some pieces from Utah Code, just so that you can have a reference if you had any questions about why Weber Human Services exists, and why does this relationship between Weber and Morgan Counties exist, and what's the purpose of that relationship? So what I've pasted in here is actually from the local mental health authorities responsibility section of the Utah Code. There's another section, I give you the reference, but I didn't paste in any of the content from that, just so that you could get an idea of what we're supposed to be doing together. So in this particular part of the code, each county is designated as the local mental health authority and the local substance abuse authority. That's the county's responsibility. That goes back probably more than 30 years, when the state and counties came together and shifted some responsibilities. Before this code was put in place, the counties were responsible for jails, including juvenile jails and detention, and the state was responsible for mental health and substance. They got together, they did some kind of negotiation. The state said, we'll take over the juvenile justice side of things, and we'll partner with the counties on the behavioral health side. So part of the code in this agreement was that each local mental health and each local substance abuse authority would provide funding to at least 20% of the state funds that it receives to fund the services that are designated under these sections of the code. So that's where your fiscal responsibility comes into play. The state took over juvenile justice, and the counties became partners in the behavioral health arena. Um, then I pasted in, just in, on the mental health side, what are the responsibilities of the local mental health authority? In mental health, they have responsibility of providing all of those services within funding mechanisms to the citizens of their counties. So all of those things are things that Weber Human Services, under your direction, being part of our board, that we do for both Weber and Morgan Counties. There's something similar on the substance side. It doesn't get into as much detail about the modalities of services, but it talks about all of the things that we then, under your leadership, provide to the citizens of both of those counties. So that's just why we're here today. Um, on the behavioral health side, we wanted to give just a little bit of statistics about what we are doing for specifically citizens of Morgan County. There are currently 215 households in Morgan County that have at least one individual that's eligible for Medicaid, a total of 421 individuals that are eligible for Medicaid. Anyone that's eligible for Medicaid in Morgan County, we are required to provide their behavioral health care. Everything from hospitalization to outpatient therapy to residential care. So we are serving the behavioral health needs of all of those individuals. In the past fiscal year, there were 50 individuals from Morgan County that received mental health services. There were 18 individuals from Morgan County that received services for a substance use disorder. And we also have a primary care clinic at our Ogden location. So one individual from Morgan County was even receiving their primary care medical services from Weber Human Services. We provide that full continuum of services that you saw in that previous slide. Everything from outpatient therapy, case management, residential medication management, um, peer support services. We provide that full spectrum at our main location in Ogden. But we also do individual therapy by appointment here in this building that's next door. So we do that together with the health department having hours in that facility. Anyone can call down from Morgan County to our main building. Depending on their funding, if they have private insurance, we'll probably refer them out to their private insurance. We do help them make those appointments, 'cause sometimes those, that's hard to navigate, insurance and finding a provider. But if they're unfunded or have Medicaid, we can see them up here if they request that for individual therapy, or they can get that full continuum of services from us down in Ogden.
Is there a, uh, income requirement that they have to meet to, to receive those services, or?
We do a sliding fee scale. So we've never, for Weber County residents, we do turn people away on the mental health side. If they don't have funding, and we provide them with vouchers to go to a community provider. We have some funding from our foundation to do that. But we don't turn anyone away from Morgan, because we don't have that many that we're serving. So given the funding that you're putting into the bucket, we haven't felt the need to turn anyone away. The income comes into the sliding fee scale, so that's based on the federal poverty levels. It's a fee scale that's been approved by the board based on income and family size. So if they're at 100% of the federal poverty level and they're looking for resources, their weekly fee will be $10. So, and then it'll go up from there just based on their income and household size.
How many, um, individuals between Morgan, Morgan and Weber County are served?
8,000.
8,000?
In a year. Yep. So, and, and that includes everything from crisis services, right? So, a, and we have a budget of $60 million, right? So, you know, today we're gonna talk about $160,000 from Morgan coming into Weber Human Services. That's of that $60 million, that's your portion. So with that $60 million on the substance and mental health side, we're serving over 8,000 people a year. Um, crisis services, MCOT, going out into the communities, they're seeing four to five people a day, we've got appointments. We've got 100 therapists that are seeing 30 people a week, right? So you start multiplying that, they're also getting services from case managers, from doctors. Um, so, yeah, it's a lot that's happening down there. But it does provide then that full continuum to people in Morgan County without having your own infrastructure. I mean, you think one physician, one of our physicians will cost us $350,000, right? So we're able to provide that service to 50 individuals from Morgan County if they need it with a very small give, because that infrastructure exists down in Weber County. Um, when we, when we decided to work with the health department to open up this office here, we wanted to make sure that everyone that was eligible for Medicaid knew that they could get services in their community. We took all of the med, the list of all of the Medicaid-eligible individuals in Morgan County, sent every single one of them a postcard to tell them about this office and where they could get services. We don't see many people requesting the services here. So we have a therapist, when appointments are made, that drives up from Ogden, sees them here. On average, it's about one, one client a week. Yeah. So, but we're still seeing them in Ogden, they come down there, we offer them the opportunity if they'd rather. We don't have a doctor that comes up, that's too expensive for us for the travel time, but they come down to us to see us down there.
So there's, on average, one a week here. Going down there, what's the average per week?
Probably, you, you, we have
I can go back a slide.
Yeah. So we've got 50 individuals that were served in a fiscal year. So I would guess at any given time, we have probably about 60 individuals active in treatment between mental health and substance that are coming down to Ogden to get services.
And are they coming from Morgan County, or?
Yep. From up here. Okay, let's, any other questions on the behavioral health side?
I, I have a question back on the state information.
Yeah.
Where it says, and maybe you can explain this better. Uh, under six X, it says, provide funding equal to at least 20% of the state funds it receives to fund services describing the plan. Are you gonna get to that later?
Yep, we will. We'll talk about what that, what that bill is for Morgan. And that's the one we've already been talking about.
Right, okay.
So for the past couple of months, it's not a new one.
I had not seen, I had, I didn't see that 20%, and so I've just done some figures and tried to figure it out.
All right, so let's talk about aging services for a minute. The Utah Code related to aging is a little bit different. The state division of aging, they're the ones that designate, um, and a planning or service area. And then once they've developed a service area, then they select an area agency on aging. And Weber Human Services has been selected as that for Weber and Morgan County. So it's a little bit different. They don't have the exact 20% requirement in this part of the code, but there are certain dollars that we do have to match, and they tell us what those matches are if we want to get the dollars. But it's not written in statute what your obligations are. Um, so then let's talk about the services that are up here for that. Um, we, you have a Morgan Senior Center. It's open for senior center activities Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There are approximately 250 registered seniors that throughout the year, at any point in time, use the senior center during those operational hours. On the right-hand side, we kind of listed the regular activities that are happening. Every Monday, they're doing quilting. Um, on every Wednesday, they're doing, I don't know how to say that. Mahjong. Um, every Thursday, they play card games. Every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, they do a congregate meal. So on each one of those days, we have meals brought up from Weber County, from our nutrition kitchen, and we serve between 15 and 20 people at your senior center with those congregate meals. There's a suggested donation that patrons make, is it $3? $4 is the suggested donation. Some people give, but it's not a requirement of being there and participating in those congregate meals. They do a lot of bigger activities throughout the year. Um, you've got holiday dinners and summer barbecues and end-of-summer ice cream socials. So trying to get more people involved and socializing in that senior center, you kind of see where that's laying out. of see where that's laying out. A quick fact from Sissy, who's at the senior center. Last year, they produced approximately 50 quilts that were made for primary children's. 15 quilts were donated to the Sheriff's Department, and they did a quilt raffle for fundraising during their annual Christmas party. So, fun things happening over there at the senior center.
So, the 250 that you're saying, that is not duplicated?
Not duplicated, but they might have only been there once. So, when they come in, we have, in order to get the federal funding that keeps this open and you guys get a portion of that, we have to keep a registered list of patrons. We have to ask them about their nutritional needs and where they live, and there are a couple of other federally required questions that we ask them. And then, we keep a registry of them. So, they might have only been there once, but some people come on a regular basis. The other thing that we do out of the senior center is that's where we run Morgan County's Meals on Wheels from. So, Monday through Friday, we bring an additional 30 meals per day up to Morgan County from our nutrition kitchen. And those meals are delivered directly to the homes of Morgan County residents who have been determined have no other resource for regular nutrition. So, they can't drive, they're homebound, and don't have family that can regularly help them. Last year, we served 65 seniors, and that is an unduplicated number. As individuals have needs, there may be individuals who are passing or have other resources or move, and we're able to bring additional individuals off of that waitlist. Currently, your waitlist in Morgan County is only one to three individuals, and they're spending about a week or two on that waitlist before we're able to bring them on and prioritize them and get them those meals.
So, how is it that you determine? I mean, are you limited to 30? Or you have a waitlist of one to three? I mean, you know, why not just-
It's just getting, it's just timing to get them on. In Weber, in Morgan County, we have not really implemented a full-blown waitlist just because you don't have that many to start with. In Weber County, we actually do have a fairly significant waitlist. As food prices have gone up and funding has not increased, we've had to cut back the number of meals that we produce, which has created a waitlist in Morgan County, or in Weber County. How many are on the waitlist right now? So, in more, in Weber County, we've got 100 people on the waitlist, but we're serving 500, right? So, it's a balancing act in Weber County. The county itself is putting in probably just $1.2 million to senior services down in Weber County in order to keep the waitlist that small, but we are having to manage that down there.
So, why is it limited? Is, my question is, is, I mean, you've got 500 down there, or how many ever it is. Why, is it a funding reason why it's, you're limited at 500? Or, and then Morgan just happens to get a 30? Is that what that is? Or why isn't Morgan 35?
Because you don't have the need.
Because I haven't applied, or what?
We, we haven't seen the need. So, right now, we're pulling everyone off of that waitlist once we can get them screened and get addresses and get them set up on routes. And that's taking us about one to two weeks.
Oh, so in essence, it does go up from the 30 once you've approved them. Is that correct?
Yeah. But then, individuals are falling off, and it's staying right about 30.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is the, is the reason why they're falling off is because it's a death or?
Usually.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah. Sometimes they move. Sometimes, family moves in with them, or family comes into the community, or they find other resources, but typically that is. Every now and again, it doesn't happen that often. But they do, they're putting eyes on these individuals, right? And these individuals are homebound, they're not getting out. So, sometimes, it is their only social contact, and they kind of keep track of them for us. So, yeah. What was my next slide? I don't know. Oh, we're to the money. So, these are the individuals that are currently working between the senior center and Meals on Wheels and their costs for fiscal year 2026. So, the staffing itself is costing us just over $90,000. And all of, Nobu also wanted me to point out that all of these people live in Morgan. So, we really try hard to, and we'll talk about that when we get to the prevention section, to hire people that understand your community, and that's usually because they live here as well. And that's been very successful for us in your programs. Okay. So, that's our staffing. These are our congregate meal costs. So, again, we said we're doing about 20 meals per day, three days a week. So, you see how many, 60 meals per week, over 3,000 per year. The cost of the meal has gone up and up and up and up. We have to meet certain nutritional guidelines that the federal government lays out. The meals have, that menu has to be approved by a dietitian, that it's met all those nutritional requirements. It's got to include fresh fruits and vegetables. They're not cheap to produce. So, an annual cost just for the congregate meals on top of the staff is about $30,000, And then, I think the next one is your Meals on Wheels cost. So, at the time we ran this, we were doing 33 meals per day, five days a week, over 8,500 meals per year, again, at that $9.82, which was $84,000 a year for the Meals on Wheels. So, you put all of those together on this sheet. So, you have the aging, Morgan aging staffing costs, the congregate meal costs, the Meals on Wheels, for a total aging cost of $205,000. Then, the next two figures are your match requirements, your 20% match requirements for your Medicaid state funding. So, $24,000 on the mental health side and almost $4,000 on the SUD side for a total county obligation of $233,000 per year. But then, on the aging side, we put part of the federal dollars that we get from the state over to Morgan, so we don't keep it all in, for Weber County meals. Based on the percentage of congregate meals and Meals on Wheels, we push some of those dollars and for senior center funding over onto the Morgan side, so we kind of credit you back with those funding resources. That leaves you with an obligation of $161,000. So, that provides all of the behavioral health care that you're obligated to provide as the local mental health and local substance abuse authority. And then, for your senior center, your congregate meals, and your Meals on Wheels.
Have you heard, in some of the other meetings I've been in, they've talked about this kind of the restructuring from the Fed? Have you guys heard anything as where that may be heading, so we can maybe have an idea?
Man.
I, I know it's just kind of a-
Right.
-police trial, but just-
Yeah.
Any ideas?
So, it's going to come in a couple of buckets. The one bucket that will probably affect you more than anything are the new limits on Medicaid. There was no actual cut to Medicaid, but there were new requirements put in place that will probably limit how long someone stays on Medicaid. So, for example, right now, someone that's on Medicaid has to be reevaluated in terms of their eligibility every 12 months. So, every 12 months, someone from DWS is looking at their income, their family size, do they still meet the income eligibility requirements to stay on Medicaid? For part of Medicaid, those, that requirement is going down to six months. So, if you come in, and there are going to be some new work requirements, so you come in, get a job, start working, you may lose your Medicaid in six months instead of 12 months. So, we're going to see people starting to fall off faster. What that does to someone, you know, just because they're working doesn't mean they have health insurance, doesn't mean they can afford their health care, and they're coming off Medicaid. Those costs are going to go somewhere else, but they won't be going to Medicaid. We'll see them in jails, we'll see them in hospitals, we'll see them in ambulances, in ERs. That's where we'll see them. So, that will affect our budgets. Those changes, however, are starting in 2026. Some of them start next year, some of them start in 2027, some of them start in 2028. How that plays out over the next three years is still kind of a mystery. We will watch it carefully, and anything that would change the services that we can deliver to individuals in Morgan County, we would let you know. There are also some block grant changes that will happen related specifically to substance abuse services. I don't imagine that that will change much for anyone up in Morgan County. So, we shall see. We shall see. The last slide that I have for you is about our prevention activities. So, part of your obligations as the local authority for substance abuse is also to provide substance abuse prevention activities, not just treatment. For, I'm, how long did Kate work for us? Dickman? For one year, we had Kate Dickman as the prevention coordinator, working part-time up here in Morgan. In that year, she really was able to accomplish some pretty incredible things. We've trained some youth on the strategic prevention framework, prevention science. We did a community readiness survey for Morgan County. We provided support for the high school, and they've reached out to our staff for additional support or events. We had Morgan participating in the SHARP survey, which is a voluntary survey on the challenges and opportunities that our youth face. And then, most importantly, we started the Morgan Cares, which has become a very important asset to Morgan County in looking at preventing substance use issues, suicide prevention, and those sorts of things. We've been trying to hire a new coordinator after Kate left, and we've really wanted it to be someone that's in Morgan County. The email I got yesterday said that Kate might come back a little more part-time, maybe 15 hours a week to try and continue some of these services. So, that's kind of what we're hoping at this point. We'll, we'll provide her with a little more help from our staff down in Weber County because she will be so part-time, but hoping to try and continue those activities and not lose momentum that we gained there. So, that's kind of what's happening.
The prevention activities only for the youth?
Typically, they focus on youth, but also on families. So, one of the activities that they did here in Morgan County was a family dinner night.
Right.
Helping families understand the impact that that family dinnertime can have on the things that youth take away in terms of preventive factors and helping them as they grow. So, we try and engage the families as well.
Okay. Because Intermountain just did a study up here in the Morgan area, maybe you've seen it, but our, our main overdoses come from the seniors.
With prescriptions.
They've already taken their prescriptions and-
So, we do take back, well, we do because we do take-back days up here as well, where we do community messaging about bring your prescriptions, unused. We print that in the paper on Facebook about when we're doing some of those drives, which then would target adults as well.
Can I put a little plug in here on this, just to the council? Because I'm really hoping that you see the benefit of this. There's a history here with the SHARP survey. I don't know if any of you know what that is, Kate. And, and over a decade ago, I came here to the school board meetings when that was taken out, and we didn't have any data for 10 years with the kids, with the youth. It's been put back in. They've been really cautious about this because there's a loud minority disbelief in the SHARP survey as opposed to the proven facts of the SHARP survey. My hope is this council and future councils really see the science here and can help promote this and keep this established so we have this kind of data. Also, as we hope to hire Kate back on in a limited capacity, there's a lot of funding that can come down the road as you continue to grow this future coalition that you can eligible for the full-time funding to continue to address even deeper and deeper issues in the community. So, I really hope that you see the science here and that this council can encourage even like the school board and movement in the community about the establishment of a community coalition and all the things that should be addressed.
No, and we really appreciate the, the grant that we just received from you guys for, for safety. So, that was, that was, it's helpful. All of that's helpful to us. Appreciate it.
So, I don't know, any other questions? I mean, I guess the ask tonight is the budget piece, correct? That one right there.
Yeah. But that'll be, this is your recommendation, and then it'll go before the budget hearing when we do budget hearing.
Okay. So, we wanted to make sure we'd communicated all of that to you, what the money's getting used for, what we're putting together with all of that funding to serve your citizens.
So, I have a question on that as we're looking at that. This is our FY '26. However, you have in here that one of the individuals-
People are changing all the time.
In fact, all of them have had an increase, but that number is not down at the bottom on that page when you've got like, you've got the Morgan Aging Staff Costs on that page. It has some salary adjustments for '26. That, there's no bottom line there, and so-
There isn't a bottom line, but it is included in the totals off to the right.
So, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I, because it didn't have a total there, and I'm just going, okay.
Did we include it or not?
Yeah. Did you include that? Because if not, that price has to go up.
No, no. That, those are included.
And the benefits are that low?
Most of them are part-time.
Except for the top one.
Except for the top one. So, Sissy's our only full-time person up here.
And she gets all the benefits?
Mm-hmm. She doesn't take our health insurance. I assume she has health insurance through her husband, so that would be her retirement portion that would be there.
I was just trying to figure out why it was so low.
Yeah.
All right.
I just wanted to thank you guys for your expertise, and as you mentioned, we don't have the infrastructure and the resources up here, so thanks for serving our county. We appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. And if there, you guys will hear probably before we do, if there are different needs, you know, especially in terms of treatment on the behavioral health side, you know, Sissy's up here on the aging side, but from a behavioral health perspective, if there's something we need to do differently, we've done everything we can think of to try and engage people if they want to be seen here. What we're hearing with their feet is that most of them are okay coming down to Ogden, but if there's anything else you feel like we need to do differently in that realm, please let us know.
Just keep Kate.
Okay. We will try. We will try.
She's awesome.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up, all of you. Okay, our junior livestock committee's been waiting patiently.
So, we don't have to approve them.
Budget.
Come to your budget time.
I don't forget budget.
Thank you.
Well, hello, I'm Craig Shoup with Morgan County Junior Livestock. I'd just like to give you guys a quick overview of our livestock program. So, we help provide the opportunity for kids to raise and show livestock. Our numbers this year, we're at 238 kids. Our numbers this year, we're at 238 kids ages 8-18 that are showing livestock. In 2015, we was at 174. So in the last 10 years, we've had a 25% increase in livestock exhibitors. The, we have outgrown the barn with the amount of kids we have. And so we'd like to, we want to expand the livestock barn. We have received a grant to pay for all the funds for that. Our ask is to be able to build on Morgan County property and add to the livestock barn.
Is this, is the barn, is it going to head, I guess it'd be kind of towards the north, towards the bus garages? Is that the direction it's heading?
Towards the bus garage. So it'll be another 50 feet by 200 feet. So it'll be the same width as the existing livestock barn and 50 feet.
So will the scales be moving and all of that or?
Yeah, we're, we gotta see where it ends up once we get there. We're either gonna have to move the scales or purchase new scales. We're probably more likely gonna have to purchase new scales.
Those got some nostalgia going on.
Yes, they do. Might be a lot of people upset if we do get rid of the scales.
We'll have to put them somewhere where people can still see witness those old scales.
Yep. Well, we're hoping to be able to keep the scales. I just, we don't know where it's all going to lay out just yet.
Okay.
I hope you can, even though I know they're not super accurate.
Yeah, no, I just got certified again today. So, yep. State comes and certifies them every year for us, so.
Say they would have to, where you're using them for a sale and for consumption, they'd have to be certified.
We had a state guy come today and certify the scales.
So is there going to be any sort of that going to be enclosed or is it going to be just open just like it is?
Just open. That's where we're starting with is just open. Yep.
Is that a matching grant or is that a?
No, that's complete, 100%.
Fully funded, isn't it?
Fully funded grant.
Should we say where it came from?
Yeah, we got the grant from the Morgan DAF.
Okay, so that'd be the WPR DAF money?
Yep.
Very good. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the Morgan Junior Livestock to be able to increase the size of the livestock barn on county property.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
That's it.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. When's it going to start? Oh, shucks.
Couple weeks?
Yes. So probably in August. I was just waiting for this approval here. That way we can get all our material ordered and hopefully have it built before winter heads.
So is there going to be new bleachers so we don't get slivers in those?
Hope so. Hope we got enough money that we can buy new bleachers too. That's, that's the hope.
All right, thanks.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Brett, you're up.
Looks like more traffic signals. Speed limit signals. So I've been working with Commissioner Blocker, Raylan Blocker. They'd like to add another set, sounds like, down there. I wasn't clear on that until we went and talked to the traffic engineer.
So just so you know, Melissa Porter, who spoke during public comment, her parents have a foundation and they personally want to fund two more of these speed radar signs and pay for two extra signs. So there'd be a total of four.
Yeah, so there'd be two on, two on each side from the off-ramp to Old Farm Market. So normally how you put them in is you put, you go, you split the road in two-thirds and put it about a third. So you're speeding up to about a third of the road and then it gets your speed and feeds back to you. So that's where the speed limit sign is. Same thing coming back from Old Farm. But if we do, if we double that, that might shorten up some. So they'll, they'll have it maybe just a less, a little bit less than a third. And then they'll see it again. So there'll be two signs that'll clock them on the way in and then way out from Old Farm. Is what, if they want to put two, the, the traffic engineer's fine with that to do that. They don't do that that often, but I mean, that's definitely something that we can set up and do.
So where, so where are the other two going? I mean, you've got one on each side by.
Coming off St. Clair. Right, and then as you exit, as you're getting on the on-ramp.
Two on each side.
Coming off, yeah.
Two heading east, two heading west.
Okay, so down at the beginning.
That's great that they can do that. I always go back to when I used to work for UDOT and ran, I think I might have said this before, but Randolph wanted one. And they had a bake sale. Now the community got together and bought them and they're still up today. So if you come into Randolph, it has, it clocks in. Usually gets people to slow down if it's 35 and it's flashing U45, you know.
I think we need to get those on some other streets throughout the county.
Yeah, we just gotta. We just gotta pay for it.
Yeah, one in front of your house, one up by Matt's and one up by mine and yours.
So Brett, can you tell us what happened here with the order?
So the, the ones that, so I had a, I went back to UDOT's state contract approved signals. And the one that we quoted was a grade below this one. And, and so this one's a little more money. But that's what UDOT wants on their roads, which I, I think that's where we ought to go. So this would be times four, or no, let's see, times two, this sells because there's two on here. So this would be times two to do that. But I guess you're only paying for the first set if they're doing that. The foundation's going to pay for the second set.
The commission only approved in the meeting, two of the 3672s, but then John.
So we approved 7,344.
But then UDOT wants the upgrade on their road to the, to the next ones up. So that's, that's the reason for the increase on the cost of the first one.
Ordered?
They've been ordered.
So.
UDOT's mandating what we put on there? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we, they have a little bigger standard. I mean, there, there's grades that you can do just like.
So why didn't we, why wasn't that brought in the first place then?
We didn't, we didn't know if they, that they wouldn't approve what, what we would normally put in if I was to buy them and put them on our road. They have a state contract with this, with this kind of signal right here. So that's the reason for the increase.
So she said we could order anything off that website, which we did. We chose the least expensive ones, but apparently they wanted more expensive ones.
So they told us we could order something that we ordered and then?
That's what Brett is telling me.
When it come down to the traffic engineer, this is the ones they wanted.
So when the commission approved this one, it came with the 12-month cloud and data storage? Does this, does the one that ended up getting ordered come with that as well?
I think so. It doesn't say it on there.
It does not.
I'm just going off what UDOT wants to put on their roads.
The only problem is, is if UDOT wants that higher one, they, they should have either given us some money for it, especially when we picked the lower one.
Yeah, I, I think no matter where you put them, they're going to make you put this one in. I think the, I talked to the shed foreman over there and, and he said this is the one that they, that they, they have, they have one over in Huntsville on one of the roads.
So we need to approve an extra 2,366?
Yeah.
So which ones are ordered?
The one that's on the screen right now.
How did we order those when they weren't even approved?
Well, we thought, we thought if UDOT, if that's what they want, then we've, we've got to go that direction. We plan on coming back. We can change that if you want. I'm just going off what UDOT wants.
No, I just like the system's followed, but.
So we got the.
I thought they were going to be here in two weeks and now we're talking about.
$2,000 more.
Well, we're, it's not just the money, it's, it's the time too. I thought they were going to be here in two weeks.
That was probably the other set. The first set that I, that I quoted. Just like, we use, we use tail spar. If, if you look out here on the corner, on the stop sign, we use tail spar, which I think holds up fine. UDOT has a bigger standard. They use a slip base post that costs three times as much as that tail spar costs. And that's, UDOT has those standards in counties and cities. A lot of things work fine. But the, but the state has more money than we have. They, they can afford to do those kind of things.
So it's just a lack of communication?
So just like the post, these posts here, these signals wouldn't go on a tail spar post, they'll go on a slip base post, which, which UDOT puts in every time.
I'm, I guess I'm just asking who, who approved them to begin with? Wasn't that the state that approved them to begin with? You can pick from any one of these. Isn't that, wasn't that the state that said that?
Well, they, yeah, the, the state, well, they never give me which one I could order. I just went off what, what I thought was the standard. And the standard was higher than we thought.
So if I'm understanding, the one that you chose was on the state procurement website so that we didn't have to bid it because it was going over the 5,000.
Right.
But then UDOT refused to allow.
Yeah, they wanted the upgrade. And UDOT changes that too. When I worked for them, they would have this, say this style, and then two years later, they'd say, well, we want this other one because, you know, their quality or whatever. That's, that's common for UDOT. Just like their posts and stuff that we put in, they have, they have a higher standard.
So when will these be installed?
Soon as they come in, I think first week in August is what I got told, I think last Thursday, first week in August.
And as far as ordering two more, does the county pay for them and then they reimburse or do?
I would prefer we didn't.
So yeah, if we don't have to.
Because then that way I don't have to do budget adjustments.
So how would I advise her to?
So we can get the sales order, but then we can submit it to her. I just don't know. Yeah.
If she just paid directly to UDOT but shipped it to Morgan.
Well, this Intermountain Traffic Safety.
Yeah.
So what's our shortfall that we're, we're approving?
2,366.
Maybe someone could reach out to UDOT to see, since they're requiring the higher amount, maybe they would reimburse the county for that addition.
Well, I will move that we approve the extra $2,366 for the radar speed signs. Do I need to say a fund?
Uh, we were going to pay for anything that wasn't covered by the grant out of opioid.
With the funds coming out of opioid ones.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. And, and we are using the, the money we're receiving from Weaver Human Services, correct?
We just haven't got it yet. I did fill out the grant invoice and all that. We just haven't received.
And you need to put in there that I'm going to order the other two and she's going, they're, they're going to pay the bill. The foundation is.
You're going to order them? Can you send me the invoice and I'll send it to her?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, I'm on the next one. We talked about Buster Del Monte and, and I'm waiving some fees in his behalf because of having to move $60,000 worth of his, his first. And Brett, Brett's here, so he can, so his first permit that he needs to pull is to cut into the road to get utilities, correct? And we charge, the Morgan County charges $4,500 per cut? And normally where would these, these funds go?
So the, so the planning would, would collect the funds.
And where, what, I mean, what area, how are, where are they deposited this, that fund?
I just, you'll have to tell me. I'm not sure. General fund, I would guess, but.
Permit fees? Anybody know where they go, the money goes?
Like for road, road cuts?
They just end up in the general fund at the end of the year or what? Do they stay in an escrow in case the, it fails? What, I'm just trying to understand where they go. Okay. So he's asking for those to be waived. We didn't make any decisions last time, so.
So he wants to have a waive the 65,000?
He wants a $9,000, his permit for cutting the road to get the waived.
And that's it?
Not the 65,000?
That's, that's the first permit.
Oh, okay. I'm just wondering about this overburden of $65,000 for the, for the, the.
From what I understood, from what he said, if I didn't hear him, he, he just said, I'm not, I'm not asking the county to eat everything. I'm just asking to work with me on some of my fees.
Basically just the fees as they come up and then if we tell them no, we tell them no, but he's just trying to, try to balance it out a little bit. And I, I kind of agree with him. I mean, we allow this material to just be dumped and moved and dumped and moved and well, the last person there is, gets held holding up.
Okay, so my question is, is this overburdened material that we have down there, which is what's on the agenda, is basically, I mean, are we going to be moving that to different locations? Like for instance, the multipurpose field or, I mean, there's things that we can do with that soil, whether it be good soil or bad soil, it can still be moved. And I mean, our department, our public works should be able to take some of that stuff and help also over, under, you know, help out that burden of what he's requesting.
Been moved once, and so the payment's already been made for the 65,000 because it was moved along the, the runway already. And so if it was moved again, the county can still use that because it's their overburden. But the cost of moving it has already been paid. And so it's not going to save money if Public Works goes and moves it at this point because it was already moved before he came to make the first request.
If it was tested and would make good, if it could be, yeah, some type of material. It, it could even be ground, what do you, what am I trying to say? Not ground up, but ground up.
Crushed.
Crushed. It could even maybe be crushed and we could get some money out of it that way too, if we don't want to haul it somewhere, but.
Yeah, that's possible. We, we talked about this last time. Possibly, we, we might haul it up there. Trying to think of the number I had on loads. There was a bunch of loads, 315 loads.
A lot of loads.
A bunch of loads. So possibly we, we use it up there. Who knows? See how that project.
I mean, I just, I just, I mean, the request here tonight, tonight, and this was, I mean, the bid to remove the overburden is 65,000. So we're now going and doing to remove the permit fees and that's not what's on the agenda.
So.
I'm trying to figure out what are we approving or not approving?
And maybe I can just weigh in from my perspective. I think waiving permit fees is not the way to handle it. I think the, the commission can look at what was the cost of removing that overburden, come up with a number that the commission feels that they need to pay because the money or the overburden was left by Wardell when we did the, the airport project. I think setting a precedent of waiving fees and then not knowing how many more fees are going to be requested to be waived as it goes on. We're always back discussing this, but if it's one discussion of we're going to put 10,000, 20, 30, you know, whatever the number is, then that's just basically paying for what the county didn't pay Wardell to do because they didn't want to raise it above what we had raised it when we did the airport project. I think that's the way to handle it so that we address it once and we're not waiving fees and setting precedent for that.
Okay. Like what I said last time, I'm sticking up for the county. And he knew it was there when he, when he, when he wanted to start the project. So the site, he, he, he knew he had to move it. Whether it's our fault or, or Wardell's or not, it was still there. So that's just my take as a public works.
I mean, I don't mind waiving some of these things or doing something to help offset because it is a benefit. It is an economic benefit for the county. We receive something in return. However, I'm, I'm worried about us saying, okay, well, now we've got this problem that wasn't his problem, but like you said, he was there, he knew what he was getting into and we've got this overflow of, of soil or earth matter that needs to be taken care of and, and sure. And if that happens, I've got it written down in my notes, that 65,000 that we're showing right there, has that actually been put out for bid to go and remove that? Is that just a number that he came up with from the place he went to to get that remo- Is that just a number that he came up with from the place he went to to get that removed?
That's a number from.
He negotiated it down from what he said at the last meeting over 100,000. He negotiated it down, but to your point, it didn't go through procurement like it would have had the county. And so he was dealing with, do I wait for the county to go through procurement or do I do my development? And yes, he was aware. I remember Commissioner Blocker brought up the point that you knew it was there when you signed the lease just a month ago. And from my understanding from Buster, I don't think that he's asking for the full 65,000. I think he'd be happy with 5,000, 10,000, you know, something like that, but just something.
Yeah, I would have preferred when we were going through his lease if he would have mentioned it. So he could have considered it before instead of coming after the fact, oh, by the way, can you waive this? So.
Well, like I said, I, I don't think he's doing an all or nothing. I think he'd be happy with.
Some.
Something from, from what I've, from my discussions with.
It was discussed many times, Buster, in this process. It was discussed on his last bill, removing all this overburden. He paid for it to be moved to there on his last bill.
But did he ever ask us to reimburse it?
No, he didn't on the last one.
Right.
So.
So I've never heard. This was the first I heard.
It's been brought up, but it wasn't part of the lease negotiations. That's, that's accurate.
He asked if I had researched the contract and I did with Wardell's and it just came down to, um, it was, it was, it was underestimated how much fill was that, or how much was it, was gonna have to be moved and cut to put in that last two rows of, of hangers. So that's where it came from.
We paid a lot of money for things that were done on that project, or I shouldn't say we, the hangar owners paid for a lot of messed up stuff throughout that last project.
But part of that is we had someone on our boards that was doing his best, but wasn't an engineer to manage the project. And I think that's where some things fell through the cracks. So that was resolved way back when, but then the, the ground was still left, the.
Earth material.
Yeah, the material was still left.
The overburden was there.
Overburden was never moved.
So, so I'm just trying to figure out what is the request then tonight?
Well, I guess the request was 9,000, but now if we're gonna do it this way, we're gonna have to ask Buster what the request is because I don't know that.
So in other words, we're basically gonna have to ask it to come back. That sounds good to me.
It just, it just pushing back another.
And I hate to do that, but I hate to do that. It's just.
And I think you can have a discussion of whether you wanna waive fees. You don't have to not waive fees just because I'm recommending that, but I do think it is cleaner for planning to say, we don't waive, you know, we don't waive these fees or the commission waives these fees under these circumstances if there's some sort of criteria. But my worry would be, okay, it's 9,000 here and then the next request is for the next 10,000 and, you know, do we get to the full 65 or do we just decide this is the amount we'll pay? We're not waiving any fees. We're just reimbursing Buster for what we didn't do three, four years ago.
And I think that's a, that's wise to tell you the truth because I don't want people coming in here and go, well, you waived them for Buster.
That's exactly right.
But we can say when we had an burden, we'll, let's.
We'll donate X amount to offset the costs of what, you know, we left.
I guess if he doesn't feel like that's fair, he can always come back.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying the fact that this is what's on the agenda.
The agenda is the fee waiver.
So this is, this is the same.
It doesn't say that on.
It's number four. It says discussion and decision on a requested fee waiver.
It's on the agenda.
Action item four.
Well, I'm looking at the submittal.
Okay, so the submittal is from two commission meetings ago. I was texted by a commissioner to put this on the agenda and that's what I did. But this is all the data I had to put on.
So you're saying that the, what's on this agenda item here from Buster is for the fee waiver? Yet in here it was totally.
Yeah, the backup documentation is from the June 17th meeting, but the request was for a fee waiver.
So does it have to be postponed then as a fee waiver or can it be a reimbursement?
So I, I think that we would want to advertise it as a reimbursement because we're not waiving fees today.
Okay, all right. Well, then I'll look for a motion.
I move to postpone, I remember S four, F four. To a revision time later, next time.
Next meeting?
Second.
Is that August 5th?
It'd be August.
August 5th? Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Let's see here. Haley Johnson, is that where I'm at? F five, discussion, decision, Morgan County Fair Discussion on 10% Profit Share Contract with Drag, Dredge. Drage, Second Chance Ranch for Pony Rides. Is anyone here to present them?
So I will cover this. Um, I had some emails with Haley today and my recollection from the last commission meeting was that, sorry, let me just pull it. So that the commission approved the fun run subject to the new route or start time based on the safety reasons of people bringing their animals in at the time it might be ending. And then I just, um, had said that Mike, Commissioner Newton had a great idea of having an advertising agreement rather than a fee splitting agreement because when we fee split, there's that argument that now we're cosponsoring an event and if something happens, then we're participating in the liability as well. Um, and then they would be subject to the regular vendor agreements and insurance requirements and we would limit our involvement to just the advertising. So that was what was discussed going forward. Uh, there was another request by Haley Johnson who is the fair coordinator and, um, she was asking if basically this one could still move forward even though that was the direction that we were talking about doing in the future because the fair is coming up in two weeks and, uh, or even less than that now. And so I just said that I'd let the commission know that she's requesting that they still do something similar to the, the fun run and that she could come and share her thoughts as well. So that's where it's at. Um, if it is approved, I would suggest that we approve it under the same provisions that we had the, the fun run, uh, the same requirements for insurance, the same indemnity provisions and, um, that they would have to list Morgan County as an insured probably no later than the 22nd, you know, sometime before the fair or else it's, the agreement's terminated. So.
Well, doesn't she need to know like tonight?
Well, yeah, but, but I guess there's, so I don't just draft agreements, you know, if they send me one, we review it. We try to add our provisions and I think there was a request to draft an agreement, but I didn't assign Janet to do that and I didn't do it myself. So I'm saying if this is something that the commission wants to approve, um, I'd request that it's kind of the last one of its kind and we'll do things differently in future fairs for due, to limit it to advertising only. Um, but, but yeah, if it is approved tonight, it would be just subject to a form similar to the one that we did for the fun run with that minor adjustment. They'd have to list Morgan County no later than the 22nd, which would be before the fair starts.
Okay. Does everyone find that?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with that? I'm okay with it too. Okay, so I'll look for a motion and if they need to state something specific in there.
Just, just say that you'll, you move that we approve the Drage Profit Sharing Contract under the same terms as the fair fun run at Morgan County as a listed insured no later than July 22nd.
Okay, I move that we approve the Drage Second Chance Ranch for Pony Rides at the Morgan County Fair according to the same contract that we did with the, uh, the.
Fun Run.
Fun Run.
And?
And, and to be.
And that they provide.
They provide the insurance and all the information by July 22nd.
2025. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Okay, Kate? F six.
Sorry, Jeremy's coming. Oh my gosh, he took his glasses off.
Oh, that's what you look like.
Kate, you talk on the mic, please. We love you.
So you're gonna take care of six and 13, correct?
I, I don't know what numbers they are.
Six and 13, the server warranty and the.
Um, our main server, which is a $50,000 server, the warranty begins August 11th, I believe. So I was looking to get the $1,134.96.
Oh, that one, I'm on here on 13.
To renew the warranty for one more year and then in the budget season, we'll, we'll be asking for a new server. It's been five years, so.
So is this, are you saying this was not in your budget?
No.
We, you forgot it or?
I did not know the warranty was gonna end until we had our server crash a couple of months ago that I'm still coming back from and realized the warranty ends in the middle of the year. That crash would have cost us around $8,000. The warranty is $1,000.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm sure it's warranted to have the warranty. I just, um, there again, just make yourself a note on the next server that we, you, we budget. So, so we just saved for some time.
Correct. Um, so that, that will get us through to the next year. The next server that I'm, that I put together to quote for budget season will have a seven-year warranty. Kate is actually gonna start making, uh, what did you call it? A plan to, a seven-year plan to know we need new server or something.
Well, we have a 10-year capital improvement plan and that includes electronics.
Was she said. Okay, so what I'm asking for is to get us through the, until next August actually, so we don't, uh, crash and burn.
Okay, I move to approve the amount of $1,134.96 for the IT department to renew the warranty for our server, um, coming out of the general fund and moving it to, uh, Fund 10, 4149310.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then the next one, you can approve or not, I don't care. Boyd has told me that he's gonna need 10, uh, board licenses for the new fire departments. So I said, give me a number. I'm tired of going and asking for more money for email licenses. Yes, I did budget for email licenses, but I don't know how to budget for new humans. So, uh, we're asking for $1,500 to cover hopefully all of the new people he's gonna add in these new fire departments.
I'd say that would be kinda tough to budget for last year when we just decided to add two new fire stations in the last couple of months.
I just wanted to reiterate that because last time.
No, I thought, but I thought we were, aren't we manning those with the, with current employees?
Well, yes, we are, we are, we are putting current employees in, at least that's what I understood, but you still have to outfit them with their email addresses and all that.
Well, they don't have email addresses.
What about the volunteers? Like if he's getting new volunteers.
If he's getting new volunteers, then we have to.
We don't give email addresses to all of his volunteers. This will be staff that needs communication ability.
So you don't know who it's for?
It's, it's for the new fire stations is what Boyd told me.
Do you know, Kate?
What I'm wondering is, is since that's not gonna even come about until about October, right? Let's bring it up then.
Yeah, and you can, like I said, I don't care if you pass this one or not.
Budget for, but yeah, I'd like to know. I thought we were staffing these with current employees myself.
We don't have enough current paid part-time to do both.
Well, that's what he had said. We had plenty.
Really? He didn't, wasn't asking for new employees?
He was budgeted. Just for additional hours. It's like, it's the only, yeah.
Okay, we'll bring it up.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, motion to.
Okay, we need to, uh, yeah, we need a motion to postpone.
For sure. I move that we postpone the budget adjustment for $1,500 for the fire station's email addresses.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's take a short recess here and, uh, we'll, then we'll start our public hearings.
Is this, Leslie, is this the one you want on the screen? Okay.
What do you mean for Brandon Green?
I haven't emailed him back yet. I, I will, I just.
I've met with him today. He's a great guy. He was the.
I thought they were working with Gardner and all the others, trying to put this whole thing together. Has it just been a show or what?
Um, well, they, according to him, they just are not. But I, I looked at this thing and I said, I've known Brandon for years because he was the manager for Fruit Heights, city manager. And, uh, it's kinda funny to see him on the other side. But he's a really good guy, really, really honest, good guy. So he's taken Cameron's spot. For the north, Cameron's going south, but I'm under the impression that it's not working real well together that, who's the guy from your area? BV3.
Okay, we're going to resume, so. Leslie has been patiently waiting.
I'm just here for my six o'clock public hearing.
I think you need to work on getting it right at six.
Okay, I am here seeking approval for Resolution CR twenty five thirty four. This resolution will be making adjustments for our certified tax rates, department adjustments, fund balance adjustments, grants for the airport, library and recorder's office, budgeting for the new agreement that was signed between Morgan County Fire and WPR Road and Fire District, other fund adjustments, and fund balance transfers to other funds. This is a big one. We had a lot this time. All the fund balance adjustments have been before you in previous meetings. I will be removing the fifteen hundred dollar request that was tabled tonight, so I will have to print anyone for you to sign that, but I will remove that. So in total sidebar, or not really a sidebar, in relation, we really appreciate the passing of the requirement to come forth and and ask you guys for these budget adjustments out of fund balance because you have approved some on a different fund and it just makes it so much easier when she gets to this that she doesn't have to go back and redo the whole thing and we kind of know the pulse of the commission on on where they want certain funding to come from. So thank you. I know it's a lot to add to the agenda, but it's appreciated.
Thank you. Questions on any of them? I know everybody's seen them all, so.
I mean, a lot of it is the adjustment because of the tax rate.
Yes.
And that's what's beneficial, so that helps.
There was no negative this time. That was good.
Yeah.
That's a positive.
Last year we had, I think, two.
Okay, I'll look for a motion then.
You gotta hold a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move we go into public hearing.
Second. Either one of us can.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blocker to go into public hearing and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have anyone that would like to come forward and share? Okay, seeing nothing, I'll look for a motion.
I move that we leave public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And I'll look for a motion.
Everybody wants to make the big ones.
CR twenty five dash thirty four.
I move that we approve Resolution CR twenty five dash thirty four.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a.
You have to say why, what it is.
Was that just with the amendment discussed by Leslie to remove the fifteen hundred?
Yes, with the amendment, I mean, with the adjustment to take out the fifteen hundred that was postponed earlier.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Good night.
F eight, Josh. Looks like we had some emails going back and forth and back and forth today on this.
Yep, and a couple of days ago. So I presented this at the last meeting. Unfortunately, the text had not made it into the packet. The planning commissioner recommended approval of the cemetery text amendment back on June twelfth, if I remember correctly. The vote was unanimous at that time. During that meeting, I requested that some minor changes be made to clarify. Those changes have been shown in red. The other few changes in red are all are those changes that came from the discussion on July first. Typically, the landscaping, not typically, but the landscaping questions that came up, I reworded that that section to just reference our current landscaping requirements for commercial development as opposed to creating new standards just for the cemetery. The other thing is I reduced the minimum acres to one to one acre as opposed to five. There were some questions about setbacks. Commissioner Blocker requested on, I think he sent the email on Saturday, requested that the setbacks mirror the setbacks of the zone in which the cemetery is located. I don't I don't have any issues with how you wanna work the setbacks. Typically setbacks can be used for landscaping trails, things like that, so. But whatever you want me to set it to, I will set those setbacks and.
The only thing is in some of the zoning, right, is like maybe a fifty buck fit setback?
It's more than that.
More than that?
Eight eight twenty. So RR ten is a fifty foot side yard setback. All zones have a thirty foot front yard setback. Most of them have a thirty foot rear yard. Some are are less depending on the size of the lot. RR one and RR five have fifteen side yard setbacks, but eight twenty and above have sixty side yard setbacks. So it's.
So we might wanna work it different.
It's whatever you wanna do.
I mean, I I just think that the you're gonna end up with some roads probably around the perimeter, but we need to utilize the space best we can because it's such a.
Not a lot of land here.
No.
There's a high demand continued for. Right.
I have a question on the vehicular circulation as far as asphaltic hard surfaces. Would that be like shale also?
Uh, no, it'd be pavement.
So you're requiring a pavement?
I would I would recommend paving to cut down on on dust and things like that, especially in, you know, cemetery for the.
You like trails. I there that's what everybody walks over here.
Total trails on asphalt, just the ones in the city or around.
Well.
Connecting. But what I'm saying is is this is just, I mean, I look at Hennifer. Hennifer has a cemetery up there that I don't know how much area it covers, but it's all, once they get to the cemetery, it's it's asphalt. I mean, not asphalt, it's gravel or shale in that case. And so it's hard packed. I'm just trying to think, okay, do we have to have that as a requirement?
You don't have to have it as a requirement. Like I said, that was my recommendation.
Question that I have here.
Change it, I don't.
Because I just don't think that we should go and pave it. That's an expense that could be, if somebody wants to put in a cemetery, because there's no longer a private and public cemetery, it's called cemetery, put one in. And we need them, but if that's a requirement to be able to get it and it's not cost effective, I mean, I just think shale will be a better a better way. And it's asphaltic if you wanna really think about it. Shale is.
I'm not gonna argue with you. Whatever you want.
Aye.
I know up at the Milton Cemetery, I mean, it's just been the last few years, they enough donations came in where they pay from, it's it's all gravel up there, except now the main road is now paved. You know, it survived for a hundred and something years with gravel and and that. I mean, the pavement is nice, I mean, especially on a hill. I mean, I remember back, we had enough snow that I know walkers were happy to see the Clydesdales were the ones that were gonna fall in the casket up the hill because their like their horse isn't gonna make it, so. I mean, I see a benefit to the pavement. It also makes it nice and clean for people getting in there and out of there in the winter. Maintenance is easier, pushing snow. You know, you don't, it gives grandma a nice place to walk versus gravel and whatnot. I mean, and I I I get where Blaine's coming from, but I don't know. You know, if we're moving forward and I think, you know, me personally, I think, you know.
Is there a way to put it in there that the options?
Yeah, I can change it to add options.
I mean, I.
I mean, I can see what Blaine's saying, but Vaughn, you're right, it looks nicer if you're buying a plot.
I mean, there would no longer be a pioneer cemetery, so I'm not expecting trails and, you know, two tracks going to the.
Right.
I don't know.
I mean, I'm I'm just trying to look at it. Okay, we want a cemetery in this in this area, and if we're gonna try to bring in a private person to to build one, sure, they may want to have that. It can be done that way. I'm just saying if they want to do it on the least amount that they can to be able to make it worthwhile, then have that as an option. That's all.
If if I write it as an option as a may and not a mandate.
They're gonna do that. That's what they're gonna do.
That every time.
Every time. And and because it's just more profit. That's how it always is, more profit.
I I could write it to where at least twelve feet needs to be pavement to allow for more winter access and half of it can be shale if they so desire. I I can do it that way. Because at least that way we're getting the mandate for at least a portion of it, maybe. But if you don't want any of it paved, I can I can change it. I'm not really married to the text.
Well, I I just I just think however it ends up is how people take care of it. I mean, go to the Porterville Cemetery. Well, it's it's junk.
Yeah, the Porterville Cemetery is gravel and it's been there forever and it probably will never change unless we.
All of them, all of them are.
All of them are gonna be that way, but the problem is is somebody comes in and they just want, I mean, if it's an acre one, you're not gonna even wanna put a road in. They can walk that far.
I don't think somebody come in for an acre, but.
Yeah, I don't either.
But it's it's pretty, it's pretty lucrative to do one, I would think.
I don't know. I haven't ever done one.
I prefer to keep it paved.
It's pretty expensive.
I don't care.
I like the paved.
I I think the paved is good.
Okay.
I just don't want us to, I just don't want us to stop a cemetery from coming in.
If if it seems like that's a hurdle that if we have all these, you know, cemetery people wanting to come by property, then we can say, this seems to be the biggest hurdle. We can change it later, but.
So this is the question I have then is, is there a variance? Because there's not a variance provision within this that says that we can at least discuss.
I could add in an exception as granted by the county commission on a case by case basis.
I think it'd be good. What's your thoughts?
I'm not a huge in a huge favor of that unless there's some criteria. Because you may have in your mind what you think is appropriate variance and then you've got new commission coming in. I think it does make it more difficult for consistency if we don't have some criteria in the statute itself. I'm not gonna belabor that point or hold it up if that's what you want, but I I do think we have a way for people, you know, residents or a business coming in if they say, I don't, I don't like the paved roadways now within the cemetery, they can pay a fee and have their text amendment come forward, or they can talk to one of the commissioners or the planning commissioners and have them direct staff to bring a text amendment forward. So there are other ways. This isn't a one shot deal. But but if we're coming up with criteria on the fly, that does make me more nervous because we haven't really thought about it as deeply.
I just, I just, I mean.
I would vote for asphalt and they can come if that's that that's my vote.
Yeah, I prefer the simplicity of the text.
I think if it just seems to be, if that seems to be a hurdle for somebody to create a cemetery, we can, we can address it at that point.
But we can if it's in the code.
We can too.
We can change it.
Yes. So if it if it seems like people keep coming to Josh and wanting to build cemeteries, but we they don't wanna put asphalt, that's a hurdle. He could say, hey, I'm seeing this. He could say, he could call one of us, say, hey, I've had fifteen people wanting to come do cemeteries, but this is a hurdle, then we can address it. Otherwise, say, no, you gotta put asphalt. But we can always address it later on. I mean, we do it all the time with text amendments and changes in the code where we see there's problems and, I mean, it's a constant change. problems and, I mean, it's a constant changer.
We can disagree.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
That's the big thing is we can disagree.
So we got three against one, so we're gonna say asphalt for right now, okay?
All right.
And then the setbacks, you mentioned ten, Matt, in the email.
I, like I said, there's gonna be roads probably around the perimeter, I would think, and through the centers as they, so I don't, I don't know what, that's probably thirty foot. Right? I was just thinking if you put it right, as close to make as.
Seems like the Mountain Green Cemetery, they're pretty close to the road.
Yeah, I can reduce the setback to ten feet.
When you say road, are you talking about the perimeter?
I mean, the one that drives through it.
Yeah, the the one that drives through it, that wouldn't be part of the setback, right?
No.
Just on the front back inside.
Which they're pretty close to the perimeter too.
So the.
Are they?
The setback in here is just how close the burial sites will be to the property line.
Okay.
So I.
Could the, if there was a perimeter roads, could that be in the setback?
Uh yeah, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, I'm just saying to make best use of the property, if the road could be in the setback around the perimeter, all your burial plots are on the inside of that road.
Well, yeah, there would have to be some sort of a road to get the equipment around to each of the burial sites to be able to dig it out.
So as long as it's not thirty feet, then the road, then the burial plots, cuz now we've lost, you know, fifty feet, and so.
Yeah, the, the only setback I see and and maybe, maybe I'm missing it, but the only one that I see says, uh, no burial sites shall be within thirty feet of the boundary of an adjacent property ownership or right of way. But if you wanna reduce that, I I don't think I'd reduce it anymore, any less than twenty because you do need kind of that circulation pattern.
Okay.
And I think people would be smart like to take advantage of that setback and go and just put the road all the way around and.
That, that'll would allow for a car to move to one side and a pass, somebody to pass.
Yeah.
That's like a, a nice driveway.
Yep, and maybe some perimeter landscaping to meet the commercial standards.
Okay.
Yeah, a question on some of the language in it. Under D or wherever it is, you've got it a couple, few places.
Are we in agreement on twenty feet?
Yeah.
I think, I think twenty seven.
Okay.
Okay, um my question is, is we've done away with private, I mean, all cemeteries basically.
No, we, we haven't, so.
Okay, that's a question.
All cemeteries are gonna be treated the same. Public cemeteries are gonna be government run, private cemeteries are those that are gonna be run by a private organization or agency. That's the only differentiation, which is why E accepts out public cemeteries, because government is gonna have the money to maintain that cemetery through general fund or or however uh the government chooses to maintain that, but they have a revenue source coming in that can do that. Private cemeteries need to prove that they're gonna have the money to maintain it in perpetuity. So that's why E exists.
Okay, all right, I was just curious on that since we were doing away with private and public, but we're not.
Just in the definitions.
Okay.
We're treating all, because private cemeteries are allowed by state statute. So I think it would be better to treat them all the same as opposed to outright prohibiting private cemeteries when they're allowed by state statute.
Good job, a lot of work.
Thank you, appreciate it. Public hearing? Good.
Pretty good then.
It's a public hearing is.
I move that we um go into public hearing.
Thank you. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in public hearing. Would like to come and speak to this issue. Okay, see no one, I'll look for motion.
I'm moving that we go out of public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fackrell and a second by Commissioner Nickerson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries, all. Another motion?
Okay, I move we um accept the cemetery code text amendment. Um amend the um, the um setbacks to twenty feet instead of thirty.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Blocker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nickerson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thanks Kate.
Tea?
Okay. Oh, he's gonna pass this off, huh?
Yep. He is.
So I'm presenting the code enforcement text amendment. We are, we had brought this forward before to the county commission. Um it hadn't gone through planning commission because their meeting had been canceled. Um member Newton made a few suggestions in looking at it and the commission decided that they wanted it run back through planning commission first um to get their thoughts on it. Three of the things that member Newton pointed out that he wasn't sure about was I had changed three other sections related to appeals from subdivisions and routing those appeals through the appeal authority so that everything went through the appeal authority instead of the county commission on those things, on the subdivision appeals. Uh in speak, going through it with the planning commission, their recommendation was to leave it with the county commission as the appeal authority. And so if that's what the commission wants to do, um then we would leave alone one fifty five point three nine seven, one fifty five point three four three seven, and one fifty five point four four oh, so we wouldn't make any modifications to those. One of.
On that one right there, if I may, because on one fifty five point four four zero, it says the county commission no longer in the appeal chain.
What's, where is that, I'm sorry?
What changed and why? That was four four zero F.
So what I'm saying is, this is the, what's included on those in this packet were my recommendations prior and the planning commission recommends that you don't touch those.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
Then one of the other issues that member Newton brought up was the fine amount. So under our old ordinance, it was uh, the civil fine was a hundred dollars a day um for the violation. I increased the fine amount up to, and it, it was zero to a hundred per day for a violation. I kept that same language, but increased the fine amount up to a thousand. He had concerns that that was kind of excessive. So one of the things we went through with the planning commission was actually kinda making it progressive so that it would gradually increase in the number of violations in a rolling twelve month period. And I believe we started out for a first violation, it'd be five hundred a day, seven hundred and fifty for a second and a thousand for a third. And I know that that sounds high when we're going from a hundred dollars a day, starting up to five hundred dollars a day, but there are other jurisdictions out there that are doing seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars a day. The difference with my draft is that those fines don't start accumulating until after they've had thirty days to bring it into compliance. The other jurisdictions are starting tho- assessing those fines right away at the time of the violation. I think this aligns more with what the planning commission or the planning department has been trying to do in that they're trying to make sure people are adhering to our ordinances and we're not out there just trying to get fines or penalties on people. So if you look at it, if the, if Chris decides that he wants to do a notice to comply, that person, it's uh just kind of a courtesy notice that, hey, you're in violation, you got ten days, uh get it into compliance. The real enforcement doesn't occur until we send out the notice of non-compliance, which would happen uh ten days after. And in that notice of non-compliance, they're given thirty days to come into compliance. If they can't come into compliance within those thirty days, they can um request an extension from the zoning administrator. In addition, uh they can also appeal their fine amounts. So I think that that provides, you know, some ample.
But if, yeah, if you, if it's not stiff enough, they're, they just do whatever they want.
And if, and I think this does align better with what other counties are going to as far as fine amounts. So then the third um concern member Newton had was over the emergency abatement. And so what I did was kinda narrow that language and tailored it to state that, you know, if there's an emergency abatement where there's a condition on real property that presents an imminent and substantial danger to health, safety, or welfare um to the public or occupants, the, the county may without prior notice, notice, take only those actions that are reasonably necessary and narrowly tailored to eliminate or abate the danger. So I kinda made it really narrow that language, when and what we can do if we need to go in, and in addition, I added that they can appeal.
Who is the appeal authority?
Who's the appeal authority is our uh appeals hearing officer, and I believe that's Craig Call.
Great call, okay.
And I, I think that's good too, because that, that's where they like to take advantage of situations.
Correct.
He's good as long as he's around.
Now.
As long as he's around.
And it can always be appealed to the second judicial district court after they've exhausted their administrative remedies, so, so even Craig Call's not the final say, right? There's, there's a hierarchy that they, if they feel they're not being heard, they can continue.
Okay.
In the courts as well.
There's a lot of due process written into this new text amendment. And then there was one more change I made um just when I was kinda going through things and talking with Chris a little bit. There is a state, it's under our state rules. And so I added section H, that wasn't in the previous one that I presented to you, and I also ran it by the commission, planning commission, is that under uh state law, if we wanna go in and inspect property that we've gotten some notice that they're in violation or we see a violation and they won't give consent, um under the Utah rules of criminal procedure, we are allowed to apply to a judge to get a search warrant to go in and inspect. And that's already statutorily allowed in Utah. I just wanted to put it into our code so that there's more notice to people when they're looking at it, so that, hey, they're, we're not hiding the ball on anything, so. I did add that.
It's a lot of work.
It is, but it's, it's gonna be so much nicer for me. And Chris.
My question, if I can, and I don't know this because I have not been in either case, what's the difference between a B and C misdemeanor?
B and C misdemeanor?
Class B, it's um, it's up to six months in jail, a thousand dollar fine. Class C is up to ninety days and uh, I think it's seven fifty.
Correct.
So it's just a different level of offense. Class A is higher severity and then you get into felonies.
Okay, all right, just curious.
And I changed that in this text amendment because there is a state law that says land use criminal violations can only be class C, and our fix-it tickets were class B, and I, I consider those land use violations, so I would, just wanted to make sure we're in compliance with state law.
So fix-it tickets are a class B?
That in our old.
In our old code, but in our new one, it will be a.
It'll be a C too.
Just wanna know how long I'm gonna be in jail if I.
If you hear those words.
If I'm in trouble.
Just work with planning to come in compliance and I think you'll be fine.
As long as I've got thirty days, I'm okay.
Technically forty, cuz you get the courtesy notice ten days before the actual notice.
But we don't have to do the courtesy notice.
You don't have to now, now I'm in trouble sooner? What's that?
Yes, if, if Josh refuses to grant an ins um additional time to come, an extension, you can.
Yeah, so in, in the addition to the thirty days, if there's no way for you to come into compliance, the planning department's gonna work with you if you're working towards it, and we can extend it even further. But at some point, there has to be a, a drop dead date, right?
Okay.
And if I refuse to grant like a second or a third extension, you can appeal that.
Okay.
Lots of due process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saves me from voting it down.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to go out of.
I move we go into.
Hearing.
I move we go into public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Nickerson, second by Commissioner Fackrell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're now in public hearing. Anyone would like to come forward and show their opinions? Preferences? Okay, see nothing, I will look for a motion.
I move that we move out of public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell and a second by Commissioner Nickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, I'll look for another motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the code, code enforcement text amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Kate and Josh.
So the commission asked at the last commission meeting that we compile a list of outstanding code text amendments.
Excuse me just a minute. On that last one, was that an ordinance or was that a?
It's an ordinance.
Did we do it correctly?
It should be an ordinance.
Okay, I don't.
Cause you have a text amendment.
It, it'll be an ordinance.
So we need to make a motion to.
To do the text ordinance, yeah, an ordinance.
Well, we approved the text amendment by ordinance.
I just was reading here, there was a text amendment, so.
Let's see.
It's a code, it's a code management.
So we need to.
Ordinance is CO twenty five eleven, then perhaps we did not include that.
We did not include that, so.
Or CR twenty five eleven?
Uh CO, it's an ordinance, yeah, dash twenty five dash eleven.
All right, so, sorry, I'll make him, I make a motion that we approve CO twenty five dash eleven, the code enforcement.
Did you want to still second it or do you want me to?
I'm all second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson to approve CO twenty five dash eleven, a second by Commissioner Blocker, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for catching that.
I catch one.
Uh, commission at last meeting requested a list of pending code text amendments. This was scrubbed by Jeremy Lance and Jeremy Archold, and um, this is the list of those that are pending. Um, it was kind of not easy to scrub this because in doing the math, he's done twenty seven since he got here. In doing the math, he's done twenty-seven since he got here in June of twenty-two. So that's like almost one a month. So just trying to figure out, okay, these ones already passed took me a lot longer than I, I thought. So there's thirteen pending, including the one from that you guys assigned to me last meeting.
There's actually one more.
And there's one more that is a citizen request.
That's correct.
But that's not what the commission asked, so I didn't.
Is there any way, Josh?
Ten and there's ten just passed and nine just passed.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, is there?
Anywhere you could tell us. How long each one of these approximately would take?
Uh, approximate?
Yeah, like this one would take us two weeks, this one would take us a month or whatever.
Commercial design standards will probably take me more than a year. And probably several work sessions with planning commission and possibly county commission. Commercial architecture review, I could probably roll that into the commercial design standards and try to tackle all of that at the same time. But again, you're looking at a prolonged. Timeline. Uh, permanent resident at. Uh, it's fine. Permanent residents at the public or private resorts that are allowed through conditional use permit. A lot of people are using them as permanent residents. We don't have anything in our code that prohibits that. I don't know really what the planning commission.
What they're looking for in that?
Yeah, so I'll probably need to request some additional direction on that one. View shed ordinance, again, that's, uh, that would take quite a bit to put something together, a lot of research. Different communities, what they do. Um, and then to tailor it for. You know, Morton County would, would take a little while, probably, you're probably looking at maybe about a year to get it through. Sign code overhaul. That one.
That was painful.
I would really like. Maybe with this next budget cycle, get some additional money to hire a consultant to relook at our signs. Because there's a lot that should go into that. Um, there's a lot of signage that we really don't define real well. It, it would be nice to get some help on that.
Didn't we already do that last year?
We, we did a Band-Aid.
It was a Band-Aid.
Very painful Band-Aid.
So the citizen request is a sign code text amendment. Uh, where they're requesting a whole new type of sign. And it would be highway signage for, or interstate signage for, uh, commercial shopping centers. To allow them to put an additional freestanding sign on the I eighty-four side of their property. That we received, uh, maybe two weeks ago. Um, I have not had a chance to review what they're proposing. But as. As prioritization, I typically prioritize citizen requests because they deserve. A hearing and a, a chance, so I work with them to fine tune their language to make sure that it'll fit in our code. And then I, I bring that forward. Typically, they'll give me a draft of the language and. A, a lot of times it doesn't work, so I, I, I work with them on redrafting it and getting it so it'll fit in our code.
Out of curiosity, what's the fee for that?
Uh, it's a rezoning fee, which is two hundred and fifty dollars. Staff spends a lot more time than what that fee would pay for.
So from what I'm hearing, I'm hearing number eight, seven, and the one that you just received. Are, are from. Community members, correct?
Um, no, so seven, a community member came before you and requested. That a text amendment, and then you as the body directed us, so no fee was paid for that. Uh, no citizens submitted the application for that. Just, just the, basically number fourteen on that list, which is not on that list, was the sign code for the highway.
So should I have given? Different advice when they called me?
No, um, you as the county commission has every right to direct staff to, to do a text amendment. And if a community member comes forward and asks if, if you feel it's important enough to put something like that in our code. Then, you know, by all means, direct staff to do that. I've done some preliminary research on the food truck. It's just, it's nowhere near ready to bring forward. Probably for that one.
Can I just ask you a question? Do you assign any of this out, or is this just you?
It's pretty much just me.
And why is that?
Because of my experience. I don't have the staff that has the experience. Janet has really been helping me on some of them. Like the code tech, code enforcement text amendment, she did a lot of work on that. But for the most part, I'm the one that's, uh, uh, doing the research and, and writing it. Jeremy's pulled some codes for me so I could do the research, but it's pretty much just.
I noticed on number eight, which is my favorite one.
Well, let's talk about that one a little bit.
Well, that one was not directed in April this year, it was directed for last year.
Well, state statute changed recently to allow, and they did not put any limits. On cargo containers, so any text amendment that I draft and bring forward as I was directed to do it. Will probably be to constrain or put restrictions on the number that you can have. Because as it stands now, based on state statute. Uh, with the new, I don't know if it was a senate bill or a house bill, but it basically exempts cargo containers that are three hundred and. Three hundred and fifty square feet or less. And as long as they're not attached to anything, connected to anything, they don't limit the number that you can have. Three hundred and fifty square feet or less does not require a building permit. Which implies that if it's greater than that, it, it requires a building permit, but. They're not a structure.
I'll wait until it's all finished.
And so if that was one that you wanted to restrict, given the state. My understanding was they took it out of the international building code requirements for a permit, and so if you wanted to restrict that, then. Your text amendment could say, this is how many you can have, things of that nature. So that it doesn't become what you just suggested.
Just a big container for.
Yeah.
So in other words, like the, like they have a container storage unit. I mean, this is seriously, it's down in Cedar City, just towards Ene, off the freeway. And they have multiple units and storage containers that they have built a total storage area for people to rent.
Well, that would be business licensing, there'd be a lot of other things.
Well, I don't plan on doing that, sorry.
But, but yeah, that, that one would be restricted under other portions of our code, but not. Yeah, for personal use.
The state statute did not restrict it based on, uh, use, just, uh, you're allowed. I did a lot of things. It's hard to keep up with that.
I didn't do anything to the legislature.
Oh, come on, we know you're.
I know I was down there quite a bit, but I did not bring that one up.
I apologize.
That's okay, we can joke.
Then there's geo hazards and, um, public notice.
Yeah, are there specific ones you want me to like work on?
I would like to see the food truck thing, cause a, a. Resident would like to start a business, you know, so.
Okay, I will prioritize that one.
With the geo hazard, is with that, does that have anywhere to play in with like the view shed and? Cause I mean, we're talking up on the tops of the ridges and.
That one's. That one's basic, basically ready to go, cause it was coming forward, so that one's written. But I think that there was some discussion about limiting the scope where we're not. Being too open with where people can build that could bring liability and potential slides to the county. But also not have regulatory taking concerns with legal developable lots that exist. And so I don't imagine that one would take too much based upon discussions that we've had.
Well, lots or parcels, because some parcels are not part of a subdivision, but they're still developable.
Geo hazard.
This one's the geo hazard. Was brought forward already and then there were questions about.
So I guess my concern with the view shed is, is that how many, how many views get destroyed before we get something? Our code or ordinances, you know?
Part of it is restricted by geo hazard restrictions too. Doesn't restrict a cargo container on. On the ridge, so.
So the.
Yeah, I'd like to see that up there somewhere closer, but I know it's gonna take a long time, I just.
Oh, this, this isn't in any prior, is I just.
No, I know that.
Oh, okay, I was like, I didn't put it in any order.
Saying, I'm, I'm just trying to say, I think these are. Important in my view, but.
Is that a pun?
I have a question on number five. Short-term rental code. I don't know how soon before that one might be available. I don't know how, if that's up on the list. If it's number five, great. Oh, okay.
We're, she's asking us to put them in order.
Okay, so I mean, I, I, I mean, I've got some concerns with it, but if we're gonna, I mean, we've gotta do something soon.
We have a plan at our last commission meeting when we, our work session, and I sent you the rough draft. We've got the survey out, we should have results, and I think we have a planning work, work session set already. So that we can fine tune it, we should be able to have something done this fall.
Okay, good, thank you.
And then I, 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 I really don't. Sounds like eight's gone. Other than, I mean, it's, it can be not.
Uh, I would recommend.
Plane's not gonna put a fire on it.
I don't know about plane.
Well, we, we do need to set up some restrictions, I think that should, especially if, if that's.
We have mics all over this place, come on up.
So during the last month, um, as Dustin and I were going around. We decided to make a count of how many cargo containers in that that we had in the city. Right now, or excuse me, in the county. But right now, we've got four on residential just in Mountain Green. And all of those are in front and side yard setback areas, which I know nobody likes. And then in the county areas, there's fourteen. So, yep, in the other, in the other, in the other county areas, there's, there's fourteen properties. That have them on them and all of them are growing. What we had as one on them have now grown into two and three. So it is probably something that is, is going to be of concern. Here shortly, but people are, are knowing what the state legislature's done. And they're probably gonna be trying to make some changes to their own properties, whatever that is, so be it. But, um, that's just something that we found as we're going around doing building inspections and trying to foresee what's going on, so.
Have we had any movement on cleanup and? Or no?
On, on moving them?
Yeah, on, yeah, on giving people cleaning up their places and.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we have, and quite, quite some great successes. I know I'll be doing a presentation here in August. But I, I would call code enforcement being a success right now with the least punitive. You know, in, in affecting pockets as possible. I think a lot of it's done with, um, obviously being very proactive. And very caring empathy, compassion and all that kinda stuff with people. But there does come a time, I know it was said earlier, there comes a time where there's a fine line that you've got to. You've gotta really hold your, hold your thumb down to be able to get people to clean up properties, but yes.
And it's off topic, but how did your tire collection go?
Went perfect in my opinion.
That, uh, I, I can't wait to get into that, but I will call that. One of the greatest successes I have ever participated in, and I've ran a pretty good program in Ogden with my hometown. I would call the tire program my greatest success. And, and it's not me. That was all of the community of, of this county. And huge thanks to, to Dustin and obviously with, with the concrete plant. I mean, that just doesn't happen, but you have all of our community, all of the county residents. Participate, that participated in it, from ranching and farming and fifty and a hundred years of problems. To, to business owners and, and everybody else that participated in that was a huge success. So I can't wait to give you the numbers.
I was gonna say, I've had people request it again, and I told that to Chris, I've had people request to have that tire. Recycling thing done again.
I, I request lots of free things.
Well, it's not that, it's not the fact that it's, it's the free part, it's the fact that it's benefiting all the people that were involved in it. It's benefiting the community, it's benefiting wholesome, it's benefiting.
And I think a lot of it's just education, you know, when people realize what it's for, and I know Chris, he and I have talked quite a bit about it. People didn't know, and he's just like, hey, just so you know, this is going on, and next you know, here they come, cleaning up their place and hauling tires in.
So I appreciate that.
You okay with us, each of us putting, uh, one, two, three, four, five and sending it to you and you conglomerating it?
It would definitely, yeah, make it quicker if you wanna send me and whoever's.
So did you send, it's not in the packet?
I sent it in a, yeah, I sent it in a separate email. I sent it in a separate email and I sent it in a reminder.
Cause it's not in my packet. So I'll get it in the other email, okay?
I could also send it tomorrow, so you don't.
Also do it in an Excel spreadsheet and then, and I'll add that, that new citizen request one. And then that way it's easier for you guys to just type it in.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kate, I, I'm assuming you.
Sorry.
Have a reason on number eleven. You're just wanting to know who's going to UAC, is that what, is that, is that what this is?
Okay, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought commission had to vote. Before I could schedule anyone.
We don't have to, I thought what we were doing was.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I thought what we were doing was we had to go and let you know. And then it had to come in a consent agenda item as to approval or not.
I'm, I'm fine with anybody saying I wanna go to UAC, whatever, and we can.
And I think I already sent her the request.
Okay, is anyone else planning on UAC?
No fun on going.
I guess that's next spring again?
No, that's in September.
September eighth, ninth and tenth.
September eight, nine, ten. So this isn't USAC, this is. There's UAC ledge in the spring, there's UAC annual in the fall.
And then we have USAC in November.
Registration's four hundred and sixty dollars? Well.
What's that?
Can we just get the cliff notes?
Can you register just by day?
The only place I know that lets you do that is NACO. And then I need to ask Mike.
Well, and then you've also got the rest of the elected officials. At this one.
We were just talking about our budget though, for our budget.
Well, but I thought you were gonna order them all.
No, our policy talks about Kate schedules for the commission after a quorum approves the travel. That's what the policy said. No, our policy talks about Kate schedules for the commission after a quorum approves the travel. That's what the policy said. I, I was reading it earlier today.
So do we need to vote? I mean, it sounds like we have two.
I thought we did, that's why I threw it on here.
It just has to be approved by a quorum is what our policy says.
Alright, so do we have a, we have a majority of, I mean, I'm fine with those two going. I'm fine with Mike going too.
Yeah, I don't know if Mike's gonna go. I'll, I will ask him, and he did text me that he obviously is not gonna be.
So if, if everyone's fine with Mike going as well, I would just approve all three, and if Mike goes, great, if not, then.
And does anyone need a guest?
I don't.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve three commissioners for UAC.
I move that we approve three commissioners to attend the UAC annual conference.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nickerson, a second by Commissioner Walker. All in favor? Aye, and opposed? Okay, I, I have a horrible memory. I, I was in charge of kind of dissolving the Morgan food pantry from the county. Jurisdiction. I can't remember exactly why that happened. Other than we didn't, we didn't feel like that was a county, maybe.
So we're not a five oh one C three and people who are making donations through the treasurer's office, if they're asking for. Something for tax purposes, a write-off, we don't have a five oh one C three designation that we can provide a number that they get it, and so. Um, part of it was that, um, part of it was just the management of it and where all the funds that people were bringing in to the treasurer. Making, you know, like, was it designated, and so we had.
Cards, I remember cards was an issue.
Yeah, and so it was just, just kinda difficult because. People, I think when they make a donation, they expect that they could use it as a tax write-off and, and they couldn't with us.
Okay, so that's really not. The Grace, um, what is it, Grace?
Grace Fellowship. Church.
Was kind enough to take that over. They had the food pantry over here in this church, then they moved. Now they don't have. Space for it. Now I can't remember her name, Apart Scrabble.
Cindy.
Cindy, Cindy has been awesome, but Cindy has been, um. Paying rent, paying utilities and doing all the time her, herself. And I just, um, I had a, a concerned citizen reach out and say. I, I really don't think that should be the case, and I don't either, I don't, I don't think that should. She's kind enough to just. Do her time. They're serving like a lot of people, a lot.
Didn't it used to just be right here?
It was in the city building before, then they moved right over here.
See, and I was under the impression, I thought they said the three stakes paid their rent.
They do.
So they do, they do. So she was being reimbursed the rent by the stakes. The utility she's paying on her own. And then. I know she's approached, um. Whatever that.
The WPRDA?
Yeah, the DA, and they've agreed to do quite a few things for her.
We haven't actually.
But it's been discussed, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, it's been discussed, and I think probably will be approved, I don't know. I guess it could not get approved, but. But what do you, what are your thoughts on that?
What if, what if we were to do, kinda like we do at the chamber? And, uh, give them kind of a stipend every single year. I know in Weaver County they do that a lot.
Yeah, they do.
And, I mean, that's just a option for us to do. That's just my thought.
Oh, has she, excuse me, has, has she thought about going to the city as far as, cause it's the city power? Has she looked at them as far as helping her with the power costs, you know, and just see if the city would?
I don't know.
You know, I'm just.
I don't know everything that she's.
I'm just throwing that out there as an idea to see if they could help her out as well. I mean, I'm happy to help. I just.
We also used to pay for a person to run it, and I think it was like ten thousand or eleven thousand dollars a year. I don't remember how much it was, and, and we would pay them to take on the responsibilities of that program. And if there were any extra costs, um, they would come to us and ask for them, but most of the time with the Utah Food Bank, they didn't do that. They didn't need it, so that's just another thought too.
I just think if we, if we, as a community, everybody pitches in, the church is pitching in, the city pitches in. The foundation pitches in, if we pitch in a little bit, I just think it's. It's all a responsibility to help one another, so. Just my thought, no decisions, I just wanted to put that in your minds.
So do you want me to pencil that in as a budget discussion?
Yeah.
Is that something we could go back and look and see what we used to, what we used to spend? You know, and just kinda give us an idea of where we used to be and go from there.
Yeah, I still have that.
Alright, I will put that on our budget discussion, and then we've already discussed thirteen.
Yep, thirteen's done. Okay, so we're to Kate and then.
Eight and then Kate.
Our honorable.
So I finally got the state funding, or the state funding, the state bid price for fleet vehicles. And the additional cost of what it would be for a tow package. The commission in the budget set fifty thousand dollars aside for fleet vehicles, um, for specifically for the admin. Office since we, admin building since those don't get rotated. And my ask is that for additional funding so that I can buy four possibly. Three, possibly four, uh, total fleet vehicles, one with a tow package.
And they would be used by.
So it depends how many I get, so if, if I get the three, it would be one for planning. One for the assessors office and one for recreation.
What about the current ones they have?
The crappy old two thousand six one?
Yeah, the ones that never get used and have fifty thousand miles on them.
Right now, we'd still use them because we still have fleet needs. We'd keep those, cause I still have, I have three, I have a need for three in planning and zoning. I have a need for one and a half in the assessors office, which the other half would be used as a floater for like clerk's office, attorney's office. Commission to go to conferences and down to the Capitol, then I have a hard need for recreation with a tow package.
I thought we got one for her.
No.
Oh, okay.
She was using that old one of the.
Need the pricing? So we set aside fifty thousand for this year, so I have fifty. One, um, I went with the, the XL, cause it's the base, the other one was more expensive for. My opinion, not much more reason, um, is twenty seven thousand nine sixty four each. And these are for the Mavericks, and then the one towing package for recreation would be an additional seven hundred and forty five dollars. For four thousand towing capacity.
So why did we determine, or why did we decide on the Mavericks?
Cause they're cheaper, they hold their value. That's what we went to for the sheriff's office as well, so if we need to buy things in bulk, we have all the same. Item, they are automatically all wheel drive, all of them regardless of which one you buy are all wheel drive, and they come with. They're four seaters, so there's no crew cab, extended cab, they're all, they are all the same thing. But they're just are retaining their value. And they have good mileage.
I can say what kind of mileage do they get?
I knew this.
Do they have?
It's really the only, that's all the discount they're giving us?
Well, that's our, that's the state rate, and because they're literally about to come out with the twenty five, so if I don't get the purchase order in. We'll have to buy the twenty fives and that's an additional three percent, so they're trying to off the, so the state amount is actually twenty nine.
I just can't believe that's the only discount they're giving us, I mean, they. Give them three thousand dollars off, four thousand dollars off.
Yeah, it's not much.
Is that through Young?
Yeah, this is, well, it's this, it's the government.
I know, but the government, they use the government pricing.
Forty miles per gallon city, thirty four highway, yeah.
So have we got any other. Pricing, have we looked at anybody else, or we just went with the government pricing?
I just went with the state pricing.
I just know it's a buyer's market, I just know people are trying to get rid of cars. I don't know if we called. Ed Camley and had Young's ma- match, I don't know.
I'm happy to do whatever, I just thought the state government rate was what the state government rate was.
I, I thought it was too, but it sure doesn't seem like a very big discount.
How can you determine, I mean, can you call the state and say, hey, what is it really? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking how it works. Or, or are we relying upon Young to give us the deal that they think is the state's?
So are we trying to get some right now, two right now, or are we trying to get all right now?
I'm not trying to get all right now, cause then I have to rotate them all at the same time, so I have a need for six, seven, and I'm trying to get four. Three or four right now.
But that's, there's only two in the budget, right?
There is, not even, there's fifty thousand dollars in the budget.
So what about the other vehicles, are you gonna get rid of them?
Nope, I still need them, until we get them all rotated out.
So basically what you're asking for is an additional, um, either thirty four thousand or twenty?
For one, yeah, that'll get me three, thirty four thousand six ninety two will get me three with one of them having a tow package. And the sixty two six fifty six is getting four with one with a tow package.
And it would come out of which fund if we did it?
I think I put it out of non-departmental.
How, how often are you, are you trying to get onto a rotation schedule, like how many years?
It's not so much a mileage or year thing, it's a use, well, so I guess it is a mileage, because obviously we're gonna rotate out. Sheriff's and public works vehicles a lot sooner than we're gonna rot- rotate out planning and zoning. But the vehicles we have right now, one's an O six, one's an O eight, one's a twelve. Maybe it's, oh yeah, seventeen or eighteen, and so, and, yeah, they've got a bazillion miles on them, but they're. Still running.
I just don't know, if there was like a, a normal, like, how often, how many miles do you try to get rid of? Cause if you just run them and run them, then they're not worth anything.
I don't want them to get to a hundred.
I just don't know what, if there's like a rule of thumb as far as. By sixty thousand miles, you wanna be getting rid of them, cause that's their peak value, and then they just start to drop, I don't know, I drive mine to four hundred thousand miles.
Drive it till the wheels fall. Or it blows its guts out wet, it was a seal, it's a seal, granted, it's still sitting in the front yard, but.
Thoughts?
I like your idea of getting a second opinion. More work for you though, Kate, doesn't bother me.
I don't mind doing it, I will do it. You'll be happy to do it.
You stick what's her face on me.
She doesn't work for Ed Camley.
I don't know.
That's enterprise, it's rental, but that's, that's lease. Hey, if you don't have the courage to tell her no.
Oh, I have.
Yeah, you did the second time, but you didn't the first time.
I was gonna say, I, I would say.
The first time I was not the fleet, I was not in charge of fleet, now I am, like, no.
You didn't have the courage to meet with her and tell her no, so I said, okay, we'll talk to Kate.
Why don't you call her, if not, I'll be glad to too.
I'll call, I'll.
In fact, you could ask them if we could buy it from, I mean, if they would sell.
I'll take care of that.
And what about Andrea, I thought you were talking about the.
No, we're not gonna do that.
Okay, alright.
So do you want me to, regardless, I only have enough to buy one right now, so do you want me to bring this to that August fifth?
Actually, don't you have enough, if it's fifty thousand that we already have in the budget, you've got enough for almost two.
Almost two.
Right, almost two.
Two right now, so she can get them ordered.
Yeah, I would say we could do that, but we need the towing package for the other one.
Have it tomorrow, I'll have it for tomorrow.
So one with, one with tow.
I just wanna make sure it's a good.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah, and I agree with that, I don't mind us doing the three minimum right now. Minimum.
How would that work, so then will we just put in what's in here?
Adjustment.
Do you have, do you have a, yeah?
And then just as a cap, obviously, cause I couldn't buy a third one with two thousand dollars on it or anything. So worst case scenario is this is two, the highest bid we, or amount that we get.
It'd be six thousand dollars more. To get two, and if you got three.
So I need, I would need sixty six seventy three. If this turns out to be our best offer.
Okay. Alright.
So sixty, sixty six seventy three?
Yeah.
He said, but new ones have gone down three percent.
Yeah, they have it all gone.
I'm trying to think how many snowmobiles, I don't know, I got stuck with, it was like two.
Yeah, time for us to buy some.
That's cause there was not snow.
And there may not be again this year.
Okay, so I'm gonna look for a motion on that.
I move that we spend six thousand six hundred and seventy three dollars more to purchase the two vehicles with the towing package on it.
One with the towing.
I mean, one of them with towing package.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackler, and a second by Commissioner Walker. All in favor? Aye, may opposed?
So I should have put this next one on just as a discussion, but I got this email to sign up for Healthy Utah Communities. And so I reached out and asked if, since most of Morgan County is unincorporated, if we. And Morgan City is not a, um, does not have health, healthy, get healthy Utah designation, and I don't even know what that entails. But being that Morgan County as a county has been in the top ten healthiest counties in the United States six years in a row. I think that we would qualify, um, but as you can see from this email. What the director is stating is that no a county, because it's a program offered through Utah League of Cities and Towns. Uh, a county is not eligible, however, it's unincorporate, unincorporated areas can be. If the, you know, county is, is interested in, um, helping them through that process. So just kinda getting this on your radars for those of you that in your area have unincorporated area. Um, if that's something like Enterprise would be interested in getting this designation, even though they're unincorporated, um, they would, they would qualify. I am signed up for the training, it's only forty five minutes tomorrow. So just to get this on your radar, and then I put in what, what the application entails. Um, to get, get the designation. I don't know if, why Morgan County doesn't. More, I'm sorry, not Morgan County, Morgan City doesn't participate, um, or has not in the past, but. Being that, you know, we're top ten, I kinda feel like we're, it's a no brainer for us anyway. So if you're interested, um, the link, I can send you the link if you wanna go to the class. Or I will be going and I'm sure they'll share the slide deck after, so that's all I have for that.
So you just request one of the towns in the unincorporated areas?
That's what the email stated. We love to do what we can to help communities in Morgan County get designated, um, with approval, so we would have to have approv- approval. Because we're its designation, so I'm assuming that would require a letter of support from the county. But they just can't do county level coalitions.
Maybe wasn't Morgan County already ranked one of the healthiest?
Oh, they are. Healthiest counties nationwide, yep, but this is for city designation, this is the Get Healthy Utah. League of Cities and Towns designation, so I don't even know how it ended up in my inbox, but I'm not sad about it.
So you just get a designation? So you just get a designation?
Yeah, I'm sure that, I'm hoping it would mean you would get grant.
Getting out of way.
Which realtors would use to draw people to the community.
Come play, go.
I think that would help us if we could get a designation through them. In the tourism area, economic development, one way or another.
Why don't you let us know how your training goes along? See what you think.
Um, so then can I, since I don't need an action, can I skip to the next one? So I sent this in a separate email, um, because they are the bids and they also have printed them out and they're at, uh, at your seats. But we did get two submissions for the fairgrounds, um. Multi-use fields. One is over our budget. I have another set.
No, this is this one. It's renegade.
So, um, and I put option A, B.
So ones, both are over budget, but one's by just a.
One is under budget.
No, the one's under budget. I think it was five twenty-four.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, five oh-five and one's five forty-six.
But I mean, our budget.
So one's under budget and one's over budget.
So for our, uh, county code, if they both are, what did you call them? Something bidders?
If they are both responsible bidders. Then it, it, our code says it shall be awarded by competitive bidding to the lowest responsible bidder.
I have a question on both bids. If I can, I'm not gonna state who.
Well, I, I labeled them A and B.
Okay, A and B, and I don't know which one A.
It's on the.
Oh, there they are, okay. What, they both talk about a well drilling and installation. Uh, why would we have to have a well drilled out there? If it's for watering the fields.
That was for bathrooms.
Okay, but why not extend it from the, the, um, pickleball courts out to there for the, uh, and paying a cost to do that? Because these costs are.
My is, and I'm going to assume, because I'm not a landscaper, that it's because that we didn't put it in the RFP that they would have access to that water system.
Okay.
Twenty is, twenty is reasonable for.
Twenty is reasonable, but then you have the Weber basin cost of eleven thousand that you're gonna have to pay. So that's on top of that. So who's gonna?
Is he including that in his stuff?
No, he's not. You say you did, or you could. That's what I thought. Right. That, and that's what I thought it was gonna be. Yeah. And that, and so that's, that was the thing I thought we would do. Oops, sorry. Is I thought that we would do that, and that's why we put in that line and spent that money on that. And so if we're gonna, I would think that'd be best for us instead of, uh, that cost extended.
Yeah, that's why that water line was put in for future use. So there, there's an eight-inch main just for that future. And plus the power's there. We, we put bigger power in those, in those boxes clear there. Uh, it is on the other side of the road, but it's still, is what the plan was to feed all that.
Yeah, and that's what I thought it was back when we did that.
But that's not.
Three years ago.
We just didn't.
Right.
There's no way for them to know that based on.
They wouldn't know that unless you spelled it out to them.
And I did, we didn't, but I'm just saying that that is one cost that.
You could take that out of there and then add, add what it costs to put the water.
Because I know that one of these options says that they were willing to work with the county on, you know, reducing the cost because of some of the things we had in the plan.
And that's the reason I've stayed here late tonight is to talk about these two items.
Okay.
Because that'll, it'll have a lot to do with me.
And then, and then the sprinkler irrigation system, um. They have a large cost on both of those, either one.
We, we have quite a few water shares.
Yeah, we do.
Out of the, out of the river that we don't even use. We, we use a small portion of what the county actually owns and I'll have to look up. I do have a copy of that in my files.
Yeah.
We have, we have a big water shares compared to what.
We, we've got a lot of them and we can go and get the diversion from the river for a lot of that.
Yeah, yes, we can bump out of there. We can, we can add pumps in the river.
Right.
And I still don't think.
All we have to do is go max what we have on diversions.
On shares, you know.
Yeah, yeah. So those are things that we could help with, you know, our portions of it to help with the cost. At least that's my thought.
That I can, I can help Kate straighten that out as far as the utilities.
So, I mean, we could accept a bid with those, with the in-kind stuff that we can do ourselves for them. Because they, it was in the RFP that where they would do things, realize that we would be able to do things as in-kind. At least from what I remember from us submitting for the RFP, I don't know.
We was talking about some excavation or like, like we've already moved or.
Yeah.
There, stuff like, we didn't talk about the water line. I think we'd probably have to have a contractor put the water line in and the power, so.
Right, okay. Those are my only questions. Other than that, I thought was good. Of course, either one was a good bid. I just. One was more expensive than the other.
Okay, I guess my only concern is, is there, I have a little bit of. I don't see any, I don't see any parking lot on a little bit. Not seeing some things. Because if you were to take the well out of the other bid, which I, I just don't even get that number.
Yeah.
If you were to take that number out of there. There's quite a bit for a parking lot that I don't see on the other bid.
Maybe we need to revise that with those conditions. Because all we asked for was a design build, wasn't it, Kate?
I'm, it's on your screen right now.
Okay.
And one thing we've gotta think of when, when.
And you did ask for irrigation and well design.
Okay.
I don't see anything that has to do with parking.
Didn't the, um, option B include the fence, but in option A, they did not?
I don't see a fence on either one.
I thought we took it out.
Not on either bid, no.
Because I mean, part of the project.
So you had the RFP on the agenda twice and one, and one of those times you removed the need for a fence. Because we thought we'd do it. Like that would be our portion of the grant.
Okay.
But I don't see in here anything where we put.
Where it's crossed out?
No, I don't see where we requested.
There's no fence on.
On the final, where we requested a fence or where we requested a parking lot. Unless you're seeing something.
But I just, I just saw.
Oh, installation of fence along the river boundary, under construction phase.
We also didn't approve, approve in there a.
Okay, fence.
So there is fence.
Okay.
But I don't see anywhere for parking lot.
I don't, I don't remember putting parking in there. Because I didn't, that wasn't on the site plan. The site plan didn't have parking either.
You got a whole lot of money into a parking lot that we didn't ask for.
Well, if you only delete the well, you're, there's a whole different, we're talking about a big difference.
Yeah, that's huge, yeah. Well, I'm thinking this one. Look how far down there, how long we're going.
Which one?
That's like, yes, that's feet.
Yeah.
That's extremely deep.
Yeah, it's three hundred. Well, for irrigation, we don't need that.
I just did, I just drilled the well.
We can just throw a pump in the river, can't we?
Yeah, we can. We can.
So that'd be five eighty-five, you know, but.
I just wonder if that's a typo. It should've been fifty, fifty.
Are we able to? Do like we did the last time and re-ask these items to the individuals, the different ones that did this?
I almost feel like we have to, to clarify some stuff because otherwise I don't think we're getting the same thing.
They're not bidding after apples here. And I don't even know where the parking lot came from.
And, and there is not a trail on there, guys. Wasn't there, Kate?
No.
I mean, it's not in here, but we were discussing that because Brett has put a trail all the way out there.
Okay. Y'all, trying to be real patient.
Okay.
I've put the RFP on commission agenda twice. You've had it twice. You approve it, post it. I know nothing. Okay?
Was this while I was gone or something?
You create, tasked Lydia to create it. She created it. I put it on the agenda. You modified it. I put it on the agenda. You approved it.
Who, who, who made it?
Lydia.
Lydia just said she.
She sent something about a parking lot. Some messages came through.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have.
But if it's not on the RFP, then you can't. It has to be on there for, to be a bid. It has to be.
So she said, she said she put a parking lot, but it's not on there?
No, she was asking me to read her text message about that, which says, we can't asphalt the parking lot by the fairgrounds. At least the Weber River Water people have asked us not to and to leave it just gravel so that stormwater can drain better.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Right, but there's no.
So I'm, I'm happy for you guys to modify it and me to submit it to these two. I'm just getting a little.
I'm just looking at something, but there's nowhere on there asking for a parking lot.
I hear ya.
So that's why I'm just saying, I don't know why they would have.
Because we asked for a design build.
I think that this is a, maybe a larger thing or a request. Maybe we can discuss more in Commissioner comments. But we may want to do a text amendment, especially when there's a design build where you have to give it to the lowest responsible bidder. It's kinda hard when they design, when we're asking them for a design build and maybe we like one better than the other, maybe a little more flexibility. I think if you're purchasing something and it's car for car, something like that, that makes sense because you're getting the same product. But when you're asking for a design build, maybe you wanna consider amending that portion of our code to allow for flexibility, to look at qualifications, what they've designed, what fits better with the community. But currently our, our code does say lowest responsible bidder is mandatory. But you can, under subsection C. Get to the bids and go back to the bidders as long as you go back to both of them and offer them the same opportunity to revise.
Which is why we don't post in the agenda packet the bids.
That's right. Or discuss them by name. We just say option A, option B.
Option B.
So, well, I'm sorry I wasn't here, but, but I.
I think the other thing too is when anyone's writing an RFP.
Somebody help you with this? Did you just do it yourself?
Well, it was input from you guys, Brett. I, I say, do, do you want me to clarify something? Sorry. As far as parking goes, the Weber River District has asked us not to asphalt that parking lot. We discussed that back when you guys were making the map plan, because the city doesn't have a storm drain runoff plan solid right now. And so they asked us not to do anything asphalt with the parking lot, leave it as is, just kinda grade it and level it out and keep it gravel.
But you didn't put that in there?
Well, I wasn't expecting contractor to do that. We have equipment to grade it ourselves. Does that make sense? Like I wasn't, I wasn't expecting that to be part of the build for the park, because the gravel's over there. We just have to level it out a little bit.
So you didn't have any, so you didn't put on their, um, site design and all that stuff and landscaping and.
I didn't put anything about.
We have trucks and tractors and all that for all that stuff, but it's gotta be specific to what you want.
But we talked about that as our match.
Yeah.
That's what was discussed. That's why we didn't put it in there.
I don't need a contractor to bid on it.
But in our RFP.
A match for the grant.
But our RFP that's on the screen, the second paragraph of scope of work, it says site preparation and grading. So it is included in the RFP even if that's not what we intended.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. It's, we have to be very specific in.
Well, the, the site itself, where we put the grass does need to be graded.
Okay, so we have to be very specific.
Okay.
In that we want that done for the area of the fields. However, the parking lot area, we will take care of as a county. See what I'm saying?
Yes. I would say if, if a contractor comes in and bids it and it's underbid, and then, I, I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding why we would have to be more specific than if we're seeing like, yeah, I'll help grade the site within your budget. Then do we have to be specific about whether it's we're grading the parking lot or we're grading the field?
Just because the contractor.
People did it.
I didn't think we were putting a parking lot out there.
Well, we're not. There isn't, we're not putting a parking lot. There's currently gravel that people park on and will continue to do so. So the site that we're talking about is the site. I mean.
Okay, so did we give them a site plan?
Yes, yes.
With that, and it had zero parking on it?
Zero parking on it.
This is, I will show you exactly what we gave them. Uh, the, 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 fairgrounds, fairgrounds, fairgrounds. Uh, that we gave them the concept plan and the concept cost estimate for the whole thing. Both of them requested it. I gave it to both of them. And then pointed out that.
Right there.
This, right.
There's your parking.
Back.
I see parking right there.
Well, it's, it's the back one. Sorry. Well, we said it's the grass field, that grass field.
Where does it say that on the RFP? It's just the grass field.
I guess when the contractors called and asked, I told them. Alright, I, I guess I, I thought it was clear.
But then there's only one contractor.
These two bids, you'd realize that, that it wasn't clear to them because they, they obviously bid totally, two totally different things.
Well, yeah. But I would say both of the bids technically fulfill the need, don't they? If we said these are our needs.
Well, I, I think if, if you look at one of them, if they, if you removed some of the things that he didn't need to, or they, you drop close to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I understand that, but I also, they're not things that we required on the RFP, so it wasn't. I didn't tell them they had to put in stuff for parking on the RFP, if that makes sense. It's.
There was a well on the RFP.
So I was just talking to Brett about this. It's actually cheaper for us to dig a well than it will be to put a pump house in, because I don't need culinary water. Um, we already have culinary water at the bathrooms. I just need sprinkler water. And if we dig a shallow well, that cost effective is way more cost effective than building a pump house. And it can be done sooner and quicker.
But if we go and take the water line all the way out there.
It's still cheaper.
Is it gonna be more expensive than putting in a well?
Want to use secondary water? But I assume we're just gonna pump out of the river like we do already. We already have a pump house over to the fairgrounds that we pump, you know, that we, that we water the fairground. We'd have to do something similar, but I don't, I, I didn't work with theirs as far as cheaper to dig a well. I'm surprised at that. I mean, you know what I mean? I don't think a pump house is near, near that much. Everything I deal with the pump house at the fairgrounds over there is, is nothing like the cost of putting a well in. So that I think we need to work with. And culinary water, you don't need culinary water, so.
So we're not gonna have any facilities over there at all?
We're just using the bathroom by the.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Yeah.
That's what I remember by the site plan, but I didn't know about digging a well is what surprised me, I guess. However, we can do that to get secondary water. That's what we, that's what they water the fields with. And we do have, I told you this a minute ago, we do have shares for that.
Right.
To use it.
Twenty-six shares.
I'm surprised, yeah, the same, but I'm surprised they're saying that it's more to build a pump house, I guess, to me.
Yeah, because we've got a two hundred thousand dollar one and another two.
I don't know. What do they say in a well? It's a hundred and seventy? This is just, we still have to pump up. Still have to put a pump house, even if you pump it out of the well or it's out of the river.
Did you get rid of the parking lot on this one? Four twenty-four. The well doesn't need to be that much.
But Brett's saying you have to pump it either way. You'll have a pump house either way.
I feel like this is.
It's a much better presentation.
Mike. Sorry. I was just trying to be cost effective with the RFP, um, to try to make our grant money stretch as far as we can. We only have two hundred thousand dollars of it. And I would like to be able to not make our park costs triple that. So I would like our match to be able to basically cover the park. And from all of my research and, and meeting with people about these kinds of things and filing for permits for wells, it is significantly cheaper to dig a shallow well where I don't need culinary. Than it would be to build a pump house and maintain it.
Okay, with a shallow well, depends on what you're doing with that shallow well. If it's part of your irrigation system, you have to, either way, you have to go to the state of Utah. If we go through Weaver Basin, we'll have to go down a hundred feet. If you get, build a shallow well for the purpose of what we're doing, we have to give up, we don't want to give up any of our shares from the water system. But we do have to have a diversion that has to be altered from where the regular division is or diversion is. And we have to do that. And at that point, we don't have to drill very far, which is nice. But if you have to go down a hundred feet.
Yeah, no, if we have to go down farther, it'll be cheaper to build a pump house. I agree. But if.
Just because I would really like to go home, can I make a suggestion that Brett and Matt and Lydia and I sit down and we discuss parking lot and fence and well over sprinklers? And then go back to these two bidders with those modifications and come back for the August fifth meeting.
Sounds great.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. We did not get any submissions for our fairground electrical, um, so request to repost. Zero. Nada.
So if you look at that bid, um, we, we, we can do it, we can do it another way if you'd like.
I would love to never write another RFP again.
There you go.
To be quite candid.
So.
Yeah.
We worked on this for a year before you, before Vaughn looked at it. And we could buy all the parts on state contract. And then we can, we can hire a sub to do the work. We can, we can legally do that.
Are you opening? There we go.
And that's for which one?
That's for all, that's for all the electrical. And, um, we had an electrician put that part together for us. Me and, uh, Dave Rich and John Bearagard worked on this. And I think Vaughn added pedestals.
My, my, yeah, Mike, I went through and.
Add some pedestals. Did you change anything else besides that?
Yes.
You added what?
What they added.
Seen, I haven't seen the event.
Yeah, Mike wanted like twelve total pedestals.
Yeah, and I think I.
What they, what they added were these two items right here.
Yeah, the power pedestal. Okay. That's great. We, we have, you know.
See, I was surprised that Dave didn't bid on it.
So what, what we had was three different versions of what, of the lists of things that were wanted. And I compiled it into one. And I think we worked on it two or three times before it got posted.
Let's just, I mean, just, you can do this and the commission would have to vote on it, but you can, you can buy the material on state contract. And then you wouldn't have to put out for bid. You can hire, hire the sub that you want to put it in.
That's a good idea.
So that's up to you.
I, it is not up to me. It is up to them.
It's up to the commission.
So we don't have to get, like, we can just pick a sub, even though it's over the five thousand dollar limit?
Yeah, you can just pick a sub. If, and we can buy all the parts. We would have to buy all the parts from the, what's, what's the name of the company that has all the lights and stuff?
Usually EW, well, border states is the state, is a state contract.
Yeah, what it is, but.
And that may be allowed under state code. I do think that we'd still have to bid out because it, it says all contracts of every kind involving amounts in excess of five thousand dollars for personal service has to go after public advertising to the lowest responsible bidder. So I don't know if the state requires it, but our, our code still would require bidding.
So, yeah, John, John Bearregard researched that for us and thought we could do it that way, but.
I can reach out to John and clarify that because he might've just been looking at state code, but our code.
Probably was, yeah.
At least the way I read it, if it's, it's considered personal service, if you're subcontracting, and if we're paying more than the five thousand, it still has to be awarded by competitive bill bidding after public advertising.
We could, we could go and do it, just like you're saying and you're saying, just bid it. I mean, change the RFP.
Just change the RFP to do the work and not.
Contractor that will go and.
And where did you advertise it?
On the county website and on the, that, what's that? Yep, the one Jared always had me post to, whatever that thing is.
State website. So we, yeah, we have to put it out to some public place and you, you can use a paper still, like say Standard Examiner. You can do that still until that goes away one day. But you just have to, you have to post it in a public, a public place, like a newspaper or a state website. So they didn't see it. Their, the right contractor didn't see it or something went on.
Okay. Yo, everybody okay with that?
I am okay with what Brett proposed.
Okay. Honorable Garrett.
Garrett'll, he'll check that out for us, I guess.
All right. I did send another opioid email that came in today. You may have seen that. So the one that we have that is in the agenda packet is.
Updated?
Well, i- it's just a different one. So there's Purdue and the Sackler family. And it's pretty high amounts. I think it was six point five billion dollars. So it'll be quite a bit.
Wow.
Um, the one that we received today was regarding eight more. And so I guess the question I had is in the past, I was reviewing all of the settlement documents. And I was given signing authority to bind the county and, and make sure we received our opioid money. At this point, they're just using all of the same forms that I've already reviewed. And the question would be, um, could I retain that authorization? Would you like me to continue as these opioid settlements come through to manage that? It doesn't have to be me. I've already reviewed all the documents and now we're just using those same forms. And so that could be a commissioner, it could be manager, it could be the treasurer. Or if you want me to continue to manage it, I will do that. Yes.
I think it's a great.
Okay, so if we could just do that as a vote, that, that authorization continues until you rescind it, then I don't have to keep bringing it back every time we get a new. I, I will still forward you the emails just so you're aware that it's going, but I won't need to bring every settlement back to the commission. So that's my request.
Yeah, I'll look for motion.
I move that we, uh, continue to have Garrett, uh, our attorney, uh, Garrett Smith do the signature or have the signature authority for the continued participation of opioid settlements.
And then can you, can you add until rescinded?
Until rescinded.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Fackrell and a second by Commissioner Blocker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and Garrett.
Thank you. So I received a phone call from Bobby Eddy and she is the sister of Brown, Brown, who was one of our, um, employees with the fire department that passed away because of cancer. Um, she has a leg injury, otherwise she'd probably be here today. Um, she's never been charged a, a fee. But part of that is due to, um, just some of the disconnect with the business licensing. But now that everyone's on the same page and credit to all of our, um, department heads and elected officials getting on the same page there. Now it is being sent to planning, who then funnels it out to the necessary parties so that the sheriff, fire, everyone's aware. Rather than just getting a business license and maybe not involving, you know, everyone that needs to be there. So, so that's flowing properly. But, but because of that, um, there was a fee that was paid. It's a fifty dollar fee. She was asking if they could waive it and, um, planning can't waive fees without commission approval. And, um, I, I am aware of the situation and I said I'd bring it to the commission. A little bit about the No One Fights Alone 5K. It was started, I believe, five or six years ago. And it's a five oh one C three. All the donations stay local. There's no overhead. So they just volunteer. And they've been able to help twenty families in Morgan County since they started. And these are any families that have, um, people fighting cancer. So that's where all the proceeds go.
Can you talk to the retroactive part?
Yeah, and so, so I think I got the call last Tuesday morning because I didn't ask Kate to put it on until like two o'clock and I apologized for missing the deadline to put it on the agenda. But it was sometime that morning that I got the phone call and the event happened last weekend. And so there was no time to get it on an agenda. And so, um, Bobby paid the fee and I said, well, I'll see if we can get that reimbursed.
And it's fifty dollars?
And it's fifty dollars and it's, it's the, the permitting application fee for using the right of way. Because they went in a portion of the county and once again, that triggers Josh's department to reach out to sheriff and fire and anyone else that needs to be involved. But that's their permit application fee that they're requesting to be reimbursed.
Okay, I will move that we waive the retroactively, the, um, permitting application fee of fifty dollars for the No One Fights Alone 5K.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Blocker and a second by Commissioner Fackrell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Submitted.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Kate's anxious to get home, so let's keep our.
I'm anxious to never write an RFP.
She wants to go home and write an RFP.
I do. Can't wait.
Um, Commissioner Blocker.
Yeah, um, I mentioned I attended the Intermountain, um, assessment health needs for Morgan County. And interesting, since you're talking about the food pantry, that our county's food insecurity is up five percent from twenty twenty-one. So, and as I mentioned before, thirty percent of our overdoses are accidental due to elderly not remembering they took their meds. And then I attended the YCC and Brent Hensley, who works there, gave a great present, presentation on Love Better where he educates. And does outreach, prevention for our teens on how to have healthy relationships and not to get into an abusive relationship and how to recognize the signs.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for everything you attend. I don't think, I don't think we realize how much everybody goes to and what we attend. So I appreciate everybody and what they do. Commissioner Newton is not here. Commissioner Fackrell.
Since Kate wants to go home, I'll just stop.
I'm not even sorry.
I just want to mention that the Fourth of July event went off very well. And Debbie and her group with the chamber did fantastic. And they, they're working on a lot of things to improve it for next year. And, uh, we had a great attendance. Is that correct, Debbie? We had great attendance. We had the, we had the largest cardboard regatta. If you've never seen it yet, Mike or Matt, you need to come and see it.
I do need to.
And, uh, I don't know if they have video of it or not on their site, but, uh, it is a fun event. And, um, anyway, as far as the, I have a question on the parade for the fair. Are we putting in a float? And so I'm not going to be there either way. So we've done it in the past for the county fair. And, uh, I don't know what you guys have planned for.
Well, Mike's always brought it up, but I, I guess I ought to ask Mike because we've always used his truck to do it. So I'll ask him.
I'll be out of town.
I was gonna say, I'll be out of town. I've got a wedding to go to. But other than that, as far as this thing that Kate just sent back to me, Kate, as far as this, um, event that I requested, it's a cost because it has a cost in what?
Okay.
It's just the transportation cost is all I'm asking.
I sent it to Garrett because I was like, maybe a misunderstanding. So he's talking about the conference.
The one, the UAC one?
No.
UOT one that I just sent you today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's the UOT one that's standing August eleventh and twelfth.
Or whatever.
Well, I think, I think just our policy was that you get, um, any, any travel training for commissioners under the policy just says to get a quorum to say, yeah, we want you to go.
But he was wanting it on consent and I was like, I don't know if I can do that.
Well, I can do it on the fifth. It doesn't matter because there's no cost to it. All it is, is just the travel.
So that was my question is, I usually don't put things on consent agenda if they have a cost.
Because we've also got the cost. I've got.
The cost is just the per diem mileage, right?
Oh, I don't use that. It's just the mileage going there.
But it's still, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just the mileage. You get a rate based on.
Whatever the.
Whatever, however many miles you travel. Yeah. So I just put it at the beginning of the action items because then you get the quorum sign off.
Was that your question? Is why it was on action instead of consent?
No, I didn't expect it to be on today.
Oh, right.
But for next time, you know, that's what it was. I just wanted the procedure to make sure I'm doing it correctly.
Same thing. That's why I sent it to him.
Because you received it too.
So I'd just say the same, like the same thing we did with UAC today to say, hey, I, I'd like to go to this conference.
Cause I put in two conferences to go to.
Yeah. Which is fine. Yep, so you just put it on.
In that email?
Yeah.
Yes, I saw that.
I think the idea was, you know, when to get quorum sign off is just so that you're more aware of where your budget's at before the end of the year and say, oh, did we go over? Can we have someone go to this? Yeah. Do we need to increase it?
Do we usually attend NICO? Okay, because I kept getting texts from commissioners. Where's Morgan County? Where's Morgan County?
Had a lot. Where you at? Haven't been elected in years, y'all.
So I just need to know the procedure for what we're going to do for, you know, if, if we now need to have Kate go through and, and schedule all these things for me. I just want to make sure because otherwise I'm going to schedule.
I'll send you the policy.
Yeah, we don't care. I don't care who schedules them as long as we just kind of keep track of our budget so we're not.
Yeah, I'll send you the policy that, that everyone passed, or that the commission passed, and I'll just highlight those sections that.
Okay.
That's what we're doing.
So if you can put it on, if it has to go on a consent agenda or an approval process, do it for next time.
Yep, it's on. I, I will do that. I hadn't gotten an email back from him. So thank you for bringing it up. Now I have clarification.
I would like also that, to request that someone attends besides myself, and I know you're going anyway, uh, to the, uh, Utah, one Utah summit in Cedar City. I'm going on my own, so there's no charge to the county. And, uh, so, because I think it's a great benefit for me. But I think that Raylene needs to go to it because she's over economic development. October. Because she's over economic development, October 7th through the 9th. So.
One Utah Summit, but remind me, is that the one where the one on that's numerical?
The what?
Is it one spelt out or one numerical?
It's one numerical. I think.
It might be spelled out, but the branding is one numerical.
Yeah.
I'll look it up and just throw it on the agenda for the 5th as well.
Yeah. Cuz I wanna go for my own good.
Okay.
And plus I'm gonna ask graduate of that, so.
Okay, vice chair, Nickerson.
A couple of things, just from our conservation district meeting last week, um, the new farm bill passed, so they were pretty happy about that. Um, one thing that they're looking for for next year, starting in the spring, is if anybody knows anybody that has, um, big patches of dyers load. They actually want somebody to allow them to come in there, spray it, kind of monitor, see how these things are working to try to get rid of the, the dyers load. There is a grant that is active right now for landowners. They can go and, we should have the form here in the next couple of weeks where they can get, uh, money to buy the chemicals to help spray weeds and whatnot on their places. I know it's kinda late in the year, but they can purchase them now, get reimbursed and then use them in the spring. So that grant is, is going.
When that form's ready, can you send it to me so I can put it on that website?
Yes, we'll do that. Uh, one question they did have was the fence in, fence out. There, I, I asked them kinda what their feelings were. Um, one of the big things that they were looking at was as pieces of property are sold and developed, as those developers remove fences, it should fall on the developer to put the fence back so that the cows and sheep aren't winding up in the development. They pointed out kinda summer ridge and the ridges. And so that was something that, as we start looking at our fence in, fence out, that if we, if a piece of ground goes up, gets developed, that, that development needs to fence out the animals if they, where they've removed fencing that used to keep them out. Uh, that was kinda their feeling on that. And then they asked about the weed board. I said it has been approved and nothing has happened with our.
It has not.
I thought it had been.
It's not been approved, but I did meet with Brett today about the, the ordinance. And, and so he gave me some insight. I'm gonna redraft it and I think we'll get it on August 5th.
We, so it was on, the last time it was on commission agenda, um, Garrett made the recommendation to approve sections one through five and table or postpone six, seven and eight, which were like the teeth. Until he had time to review it with Brett and I made the request that if we table it, to just table the whole thing, postpone the whole thing because it didn't make sense to pass part of an ordinance in to me.
And part of it was just making sure any Fourth Amendment issues, you know, we had it. And, and then there's gonna be some ideas to potentially incentivize, you know, where we can be helpful or make referrals, but not be the ones that are going into property either without consent or with consent. And anyway, so I, I talked to Brett. We'll have it on at the next agenda meeting. Another one, you're talking about fence in, fence out. Our code on that is very limited and it's to recreation uses and.
No, it's kinda, they, they were kinda, you know, curious like where is, like, what are we doing?
So if you're wanting some sort of text amendment on that to clarify it, that would have to go through the planning department. It would be recommended to staff.
I have a question on that. Did they bring up that we are one of two counties in the state that are fenced in area because the rest of the state is a fence out?
Well, they, they brought up that, I, I wanna say that it's, I recall how they brought it up was that the state, um, is automatically fenced out.
That's right.
That's state code, but we have the authority to do fence in or.
And that was adopted a long, long, long time ago.
They, they didn't bring up that we are.
Fence in because.
Bring up that.
Because there were some disagreements between two ranchers that caused the commission at that time to make that law or to enact a different law than the state. I don't know exactly when it was. I mean, you can do your research. It was back long before Debbie and I came along. But it was a fence in policy to take care of two ranchers that were having trouble about keeping their animals in their property. And so I would like us to go, me personally, I would like us to go to a fence out, just like the rest of the state.
And we are fence out. There, there's nothing in our code that says we're fence in, but the only specific provision of our code that outlines fence out is recreational dwelling units shall be required to fence out livestock. And that's in 155.292 yard regla- yard regulations specifically for recreational dwelling units. Other than that, our code is silent on fence in, fence out. And so if, if the state's fence out, then that's what we are.
Okay.
Unless we modify otherwise.
It was a long, long, long time ago cuz when I first moved here, that's what the policy. Cuz I thought, why do I have to go and fix these fences, clear up and Timbuktu? And, uh, they says it's cuz we're a fence in county, one of the few. So just to.
We're, we're not under our current code.
What's that?
We're not fence in under our current code.
Good. I'm glad for that.
I'll report that to the conservation district.
Cuz they're probably under the same understanding I am.
Okay, both of my meetings are this week, so I'll report at the next meeting.
Have an update on Nine Springs.
You can.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So we had a meeting, um, we being Garrett, myself, Leslie and the firm that has been hired to do the Nine Springs Lieutenant Governor Study, um, of reincorporation or feasibility study. In that discussion, they have asked us for some documentation. Thank you very much, Commissioner Blocker, for providing me one of those documents. And so they are, we still need to send them some documents. One of the things that they want us to send them is all of our agreements with the city of Morgan. Um, and then some proprietary data that, uh, Wasatch Peaks ha- road and fire district has, um, if they're willing to share that as well. But then they'll be compiling that data, um, and then our, that conversation was, uh, June 26th and I just didn't think I had, um, given you an update on that. So.
So they're actually looking at it. That's awesome.
Yes, and when I threw some hard numbers at them, they were like, oh, okay.
That's awesome.
That's just my.
But they also let us know that as long as the numbers match, you know, that, that's really what they're looking for. So.
It's like most accountants, like, the first 20 minutes is them explaining all the things they, is not in their scope that we probably wish was in their scope of their study and then like the actual meats and cheeses. So. But I think we have the numbers and the numbers don't. So we are gonna work on getting them, the rest of that documentation. And that's the last thing I, I had. I just had a pop-up reminding me to send them that.
I move that we adjourn.
You're in favor?
Aye.